I'm Vice President Cynthia Elliott from the Rochester Board of Education. We are holding our meeting this evening. This will be a meeting, a committee of the whole with the Community and Intergovernmental Relations Committee reporting, as well as the Human Resource Committee reporting this evening. And so, welcome. Thank you for joining us. We have a number of speakers who are coming before us to speak on various topics. But I wanted to speak with my colleagues about the way, the format that we will use for the speakers section tonight. We have about 27 speakers. And our bylaws say that each speaker gets three minutes. But it also says that we only have, we're limited to 60 minutes. And so, I wanted to have a discussion with my colleagues in terms of how do we proceed with the speakers list. Any comment on that?
I'm willing to hear all 27.
Okay, at three minutes or two minutes? Or because the bylaws talks about three minutes and 60 minute limit for the speakers portion.
We would probably have to limit it to two minutes to get the 60 minutes in.
Okay, all right. Any other comment? Commissioner Malloy?
Thank you. It was my understanding, forgive me if I'm misunderstanding the bylaws, but it was my understanding that the first 20 speakers were allotted three minutes apiece. Is that correct?
Commissioner Powell?
Well, I don't have the bylaws open in front of me, so I won't speak to the bylaws. But let me speak to our past practice, which is when we know that we have more speakers than can complete in 60 minutes, then we generally apply a rule of two minutes going for, for all speakers, not just the ones, not just the first, the ones after the first 20.
Okay, well, it's my opinion that we should have all 27 speak. I'm happy with the reduced amount of time.
Okay, Commissioner. You're muted, Commissioner Powell.
Sorry, I concur with the first two commissioners.
Okay, so we're saying all speakers to speak at two minutes?
Yes, and Commissioner Vice President Elliott, there was an email from staff also asking for some feedback. And so, I just want to put my feedback on the table now because I recognize that President White's not here. But I would imagine that next week, we will get a large amount of speakers as we move closer to school reopening. And so, I just want us to be consistent with this. So whatever is decided tonight, that we allow the same opportunities next week as well, and not have this conversation of changing the practice because I imagine that both sides will continue to come out in large numbers.
So if they come out in large numbers next week, we're saying two minutes and 60 minutes max. Commissioner Adams, you okay with that? Or you got some, any other alternative?
No, I support all speakers getting an opportunity to speak.
Okay, all right. So we'll go with that. We'll go with all speakers speaking at two minutes and a max of 60 minutes.
Yes, that's what I support too. And I was gonna say 27 speakers is more than 60 minutes, but I'm okay with that.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we will, Callier, and can you let the audience know if they want to speak? What's the process that they must take?
Sure. I just want to, before you start, if you want to do a motion to just suspend the bylaws for this evening really quickly, so I can.
All right, can I get a motion? Who's second? I heard of, Amy, you've motioned and Willis second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
All right, so good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Education special meeting. Tonight, we do have 27 speakers with us. Just before we have our speakers come into the room, I just want to do a couple reminders. If you'd like to sign up to speak at a board meeting, please be, be sure to do so by calling the board office or emailing boardofeducation@rcstk12.org to sign up to speak. You must do so by noon of the day of the meeting in order to make it onto the speakers list. At that point, you will be contacted by our board staff and provided the Zoom link to enter the meeting that evening. Also want to remind folks that when you are in the waiting room, that you must rename yourself. We need to be able to identify you from the speakers list and let you into the room. So if you are in the waiting room right now, we do ask that you have your first and last name spelled out so that we can let you in according to the list. Right now, the board has said that they will accept speakers to speak at two minutes right now and accept all speakers to the list. Usually, board speakers speak for three minutes. So just as a reminder, that you will be cut off after two minutes to facilitate everyone on the list tonight. So our first speaker on the speakers list is coming into our, into the room. And I just want to make sure if Dez Garrick, that should be a student, addressing the board regarding returning to in-person learning. Is Dez coming into the room right now?
No, Ms. White.
Okay, so then we have our next speaker should be Gareth Warren, a parent regarding reopening of schools. Gareth?
Good evening.
Good evening. You have two minutes.
My name is Gareth Warren, Dr. Gareth Warren. I'm a parent of two sons at Anna Murray Douglas Academy, School Number 12 on South Avenue. And I also represent on behalf of all the parents who support the Office of Parent Engagement and advocacy for the City of Rochester School District. Let me first by saying that I'm in full support of the reopening plan and allowing the opportunity for families and scholars to have the ability to have a choice for in-person learning versus hybrid. I find it so ironic that here within this county, as fractionated it is on multiple social levels, that within the educational system, we as a city, as a school district, are still struggling to have naysayers, bullies, bystanders on the outside end determining the fate of our students and our scholars. As we grapple nationally with the issues with social justice and injustice and systemic systems of racism, I find this a pure example of the disenfranchisement of our scholars and our families who happen to be predominantly black and brown, of low economic status here in the city of Rochester. For many, having to be faced with the opportunity or lack of opportunity to be able to have quality education and choice for hybrid or in-person learning. I please ask that the school board support the effort of the school superintendent, its parents and families, its scholars, to put them first in any decision-making support efforts to remain reopening of the school system as quickly as possible in this opening phase as scheduled for February 8th. Please do not allow distractors, unions, policymakers from the outside end making judgment calls for our families and our students. We need to make a difference. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. We appreciate you addressing the board tonight. Our second speaker, who is actually our third speaker, is Yerena Cyril, a parent addressing the board regarding reopening of schools. Ms. Cyril, are you on with us?
Yes.
Wonderful. When you're ready, can you please unmute yourself and make your video clear? Thank you. You have two minutes.
Great, thank you. Dear Commissioners of the Board of Education, thank you so much for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm a parent of a fourth grader in the Olaf program at AMDA School Number 12 and a UPK student at Asbury Daycare. I was upset by the January 19th RTA resolution opposing school reopening. And I urge you, the Board of Education, to support the reopening effort, to begin Phase 2 hybrid learning as planned, and to support our teachers as they adapt to hybrid instruction. The RTA resolution reiterates the idea that going back to school is not safe. Yet the evidence on coronavirus spread in schools suggests that schools are not major sites for virus spread and that rates within schools mirror the wider community. Teachers are more likely to bring COVID into schools through their exposure in the community activities than they are to get it from students. So I don't believe that opening K through six schools poses a great risk to teachers, staff, or families, especially with the social distancing plans and PPP that the district is implementing. I am believe, do believe that the RTA resolution overstates the risks to teachers. Moreover, teachers' concerns about safety must be weighed against the deep harms school closures inflict on students and families, especially in a district at RCSD where students struggle to achieve. Online learning threatens academic success and students' social and emotional well-being. Evidence from other states shows that unequal access to education during the pandemic is widening the achievement gap along lines of class and race. Doctors report a disturbing rise in anxiety, depression, and suicide among children and teenagers. And I have seen a rise in anxiety and apathy in my own son, who feels imprisoned at the computer for six hours a day. The inability or unwillingness to open for in-person education this year does a grave injustice to our children. Rather than flaming fears over risk, the RTA should have sought ways to reopen schools in the fall when regional COVID infection rates were low. Now, the RTA should be collaborating with the superintendent and the Board of Education to design a reopening plan that serves students' needs. I reckon, yep.
I must apologize, your two minutes have elapsed.
Okay, thank you so much.
Of course, but please submit your comments in writing. We would also appreciate that as well if you can.
Okay.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brandon Apolic, but it looks like he is not with us in the waiting room. So I will move on to the next speaker, who is Leah Elliott. Leah is joining us now. She is a parent talking about the reopening of schools. Leah, welcome.
Hello.
Hello, you have two minutes.
Thank you. And this is my first time addressing the board, so I apologize if I don't know all the ins and outs. So thank you, Commissioners, for hearing us. I am also a parent of a child at AMDA School 12. My son is in first grade in the Olaf program. He's six years old. And I know that I'm just one person, and also it doesn't feel like my views and the views of my child have been represented in some of the concerns coming out lately about how a lot, most families have chosen or chose at least not to return. Maybe they were undecided, but that seem, it is still a significant percentage of us that do want our kids to return. I can share about my child that we were a little unsure about returning because the rates were higher before. But now we feel calmer and more ready for him to return. And we also have heard from our principal about a lot of plans for reopening and a lot of collaboration with teachers. And I would echo what the previous speaker said, that my son's mental health has been negatively affected by remote learning, not being able to see his peers or his teacher in person. He has meltdowns and he's irritable. He really has a hard time, even with testing this week. He was crying most of the testing since he wasn't with his teachers or his peers to see what was going on. And being in the Olaf program, his Spanish in particular has been very hard for him to keep going with that, learning that language. But I do feel like his teacher is amazing. She's very engaging with the kids in remote learning. I know some kids seem to be doing better than my son, which is wonderful. But she has a way of being flexible and creative that feels, I have hope that she will be able to work with her other teacher in the team and be able to support the kids in a creative and flexible way as we all have been really trying to figure out all these adjustments and changes. And I feel like at least for my child, that it's in his best interest to be back in the classroom and to have that support and as he learns to be flexible and adapt as well, which, which all of us have been doing. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that his voice was heard some. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Elliott. We appreciate.
Thank you.
All right, so we have our next speaker is Martha Keating, but I don't see her in the waiting room. So I will move on to the next speaker. Kilolo Moya White is joining us as a community member regarding parent choice to reopening, to the reopening plan. Are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Wonderful. Welcome, and you have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Kilolo Moya White, and I am a parent leader. Dr. King once said, "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy." Where do you stand in these times of challenge? Today, I stand with her. Superintendent Meyer Smalls, hold fast to your commitment to the parents and families of Rochester City Schools. We deserve the right to choose an option for in-person learning for our children if we feel that that is the best option for us. We do not accept a decision to take that away from us. It is unacceptable for Rochester to be the only Big Four school district in the entire state of New York to be remote learning only. This time last year, the scholars and families stood behind the teachers of the district in their time of challenge and controversy. Today, who will stand with us? As a school board, are you comfortable with the condition of the school district as it stands? I stand with her because as she has set a vision for the district with parents and students at the center of the support system, we deserve a confident leader that is unafraid to face a challenge and offers a plan to give direction. The fears and concerns around any plan are valid. And in this day of, day, this age of living through COVID-19, we must all be careful and not reckless. But to face the ramifications and impact on what another five months of learning loss could mean for the children of RCSD is frankly put criminal and unjust. Please keep, open the schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moya White. We appreciate your comments tonight. I'm moving on to our next speaker, who is David Wirth, a staff member who's addressing the board regarding reopening of schools. Mr. Wirth, are you with us?
Yes, I am. I'm sorry about the mute button.
No problem. You, welcome, and you have two minutes.
Thank you. I'd like to address the board specifically about the reopening schools and my concern about safety for our students. We really need vaccinations for all of our staff, which is not, not being done, and proper testing for our students, which is not being done. But to get away even from the safety aspect, which I know we all have our hearts and minds on, I'm actually more concerned about the academic component. There has to date been no model lessons for teachers to do simultaneous teaching. It's been promised and promised, and it's coming soon. It's coming soon. Well, February 8th is coming soon too. And if we want best practices for our children and for our students, we need to model that for our teachers, who I have been begging for proper instruction on how to do this. And also begging for quality equipment. There are no smartboards anymore, which would allow one to at least project what they're doing on their computer screen as they're teaching remotely to the class as a whole, rather than individual Chromebooks. The technology component isn't there. The letter from the technology person basically said, "We're doing the best we can, and we work really hard." And, and that's great. We all work hard and do the best we can. But the best we can is not good enough in this case if we can't teach effectively to our students. So I would ask the board to please look into the educational component and to please allow teachers to not have to take sick time to get a vaccination. I believe Aldi's and Dollar General are actually paying their employees to make sure they're vaccinated, to keep their, to keep everyone safe. We just simply look to have the same cancer screening. You can usually, you can go on cancer screening and not have a day taken. This is, this is something that should also be done for vaccinations for, for our staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wirth. We appreciate your comments tonight. All right, moving on to our next speaker. We have Kimberly Jones, the staff member who is addressing the board regarding reopening of schools. Kimberly, are you with us?
Yes, hi.
Welcome, Ms. Jones. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Kimberly Jones. I'm a teacher in one of our high schools. My concern about the reopening of schools is specifically related to the seven through 12 reopening that is supposed to happen on the 22nd. I know that many families, both staff families and possibly some of our student families as well, kind of had childcare for their children on hold or in, waiting in the wings as we were waiting to find out what was going to happen with the rest of our school year. And then when it was announced prior to Christmas break that school was going to stay remote for seven through 12, many of us gave up our spots at childcare centers, daycares, wherever our kids may have been having a whole spot held, even at schools in some places because we were told that we would be staying remote. And I understand and I agree that our kids need to be in school. And I understand that that is driving this change of decision. But the problem here is that, that decision was made and people acted based on that decision. And now many of us are left without being able to find childcare for our kids, especially if they have special needs that really limits what's available to us. And then if we put in for a childcare accommodation, they were denied. So now we're looking at either having to take a full leave, which means that those students are going to have substitute teachers, both virtually and in person. Or many families are possibly looking at having to take their sick days on the two days that they would be in person, which again would create a situation where substitutes are needed. And I'm not sure what the plan is as far as substitutes are concerned for people who are taking leaves or need those accommodations. But I know that there are several staff members, at least at our school, who do have a need. And I don't know if there's enough substitutes to fill it. So I guess I'm just looking to see what has been considered for that and if there is.
Ms. Jones?
Be shared.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Thank you.
Your time is up, but I appreciate you commenting tonight. Our next speaker is Jeffrey Vink. Just checking to make sure Jeffrey is able to join us. Jeffrey, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Wonderful. Welcome, Mr. Vink. You have two minutes. Whenever you're ready.
Oh, I'm, I'm listening to the other one right now. I'm sorry.
Okay, we are a little bit delayed, so it might help if you turn that other one off.
Okay, hold on. Let me turn the other one off, and then if you can give me my time from then.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, aye. All right, let me get back on. I am sorry. I am sorry for the delay. My name is Jeffrey Vink, and I'm actually a special ed teacher in the high school aspect. My, thank you for letting me speak. My major concern right now is I don't think we should open right now. And the basic thing is, I don't think it was actually planned out very well. Being a special ed teacher, I'm a lot more effective actually teaching in person. But only 24% of the parents actually want their, their children to come back. And we're worried a little bit about technology, about the ability to actually teach them in person. At the same time, also dealing with the virtual aspect of it. Most of my students are now virtual. Well, all of them are now virtual. And many of them didn't really, and parents didn't express an interest to actually come back. I'm also worried about not being able to be safe on the aspect of the COVID aspect and trying to get a vaccine. A lot of people have already scheduled to try and get a vaccine for us to be safe, for the children to be safe. And the appointments are being canceled. 91% of all the vaccines right now in New York State have already been used, and we need more. To actually bring the kids back right now, I feel would be unsafe. And what I want to ask you is, what kind of meeting are we actually having right now? Everything is virtual. Everything is online. The reason for it is it was deemed that it was unsafe to have large gatherings or gatherings of people in person right now. So I think the superintendent and the school board right now is sort of asking us to go back and actually go back in person. I don't think the environment is actually completely safe.
Ms. Vink?
I do agree that.
Ms. Vink?
Person, but I just don't think now is the time.
Mr. Vink, thank you very much for addressing the board tonight. Your two minutes are up, so we do have to move on to our next speaker. I'm now moving to Ms. Shelley Rosenberg, a staff member who will be addressing the board regarding reopening of schools. Ms. Rosenberg, are you there? You may unmute yourself, and you have two minutes. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. Like most people, I am, I want to discuss the reopening plan. I am not only a teacher in the district, I also live in the district. And my boyfriend's son is a student, for all intents and purposes, my stepson is a student in this district. And I'm just going to beg you and community members, and especially our superintendent, please don't misunderstand our teachers' concerns about going back to school. I 100% agree with some of the parents who said that it is unacceptable to be remote. It is. It is absolutely unacceptable. Because area schools are doing it, and they are doing it pretty safely. And what's unacceptable though, in my opinion, is not the pushback of safety, it's the lack of a cohesive plan. We keep asking very, very basic questions of our administrators and, and those who came up with this plan. And there are no answers, or the answers are contradictory to what we've been told. The opening, the reopening plan is not safe. So I am asking not just to not reopen right now. I'm asking actually, please have a cohesive logistic plan in place so that we can reopen. Our kids do need to be in school. They do. But it is more important that they stay alive. And right now, they will get sick. Our community is disproportionately negatively affected by COVID. And I do think that that will continue at a higher rate if we go back with the plan that is currently in place. Because it's not a complete plan. Please don't take these complaints as teachers being lazy, like this narrative is that's been going on in the news. It's not. It's purely out of, it's, it is shameful. The plan that is in place is shameful.
Ms. Rosenberg, I do apologize, but your two minutes are up to address the board. But please, if you have additional comments, please send them to our email, and I will ensure that all board members get them. All right, have a good evening. I'm moving on to our next speaker, who is Gavin Berry, a staff member addressing the board regarding reopening of schools. Mr. Berry, welcome. You can unmute yourself when you're ready.
I got it. Sorry, I just had to shut off the other video.
Okay, so you have two minutes, sir, to address.
Very much. Thank you for having me, Commissioners, and everybody that's representative at the board this evening. My name is Gavin Berry, and I am a teacher at World of Empiry School Number 58. I'm also a former student in the district. Dr. Myers Small, you may remember me a long time ago as one of your students at Wilson.
I do.
Nice to see you. And so, I agree with that this is a very complicated decision. And I understand that there are so many different stakeholders. And I understand that there are so many different stakeholders with so many different positions. This pandemic has put tremendous strain on families throughout our community, on businesses. I do understand the complexities of this. One of the things that has been challenging for me as an educator and a parent is the effective communication from the district. You know, in December, before we went away for winter break, we were told that we were going to be going remote for 712. Like I said, I teach in the high school. And my family had to adapt and make preparations for that. And then just a few weeks later, we were told that things were changing. So that I think has been a challenge and I've, I've talked to a number of my colleagues about that is some of the inconsistency in terms of communication. When you have an organization that affects roughly 30,000 people, including staff and families, changing major aspects of reopening plans within the span of just a few weeks is highly disruptive for the planning that families have to go through, not only for staff, but also for families within the district who are trying to figure out what is best for their children. I do agree with the parents that have spoken up and I think every teacher knows that in-person instruction is superior to any form of remote or hybrid learning. In this environment, safety is a major concern. I think we can all agree that, you know, we all want to be back in front of our students. I miss seeing my students. I miss having the interaction with my students on a day-to-day basis. But I also am concerned about the safety. I know that many of our families in the district live in extended families where the transmission. Yeah.
My apologies.
Am I already did two minutes?
Yes.
So I, I would really just like to see a more effective communicated plan for the district to reopen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Barry. Our next speaker is Corinne Mundorf, a staff member, speaking about the viability of the simultaneous instruction model. Are you with us, Corinne?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Okay, you have two minutes.
Good evening, commissioners and superintendent. My name is Corinne Mundorf and I've been a teacher in the district for 15 years. My husband is not only a teacher in the district, but also a proud graduate from Wilson Magnet High School. I've joined you tonight to speak about a fear that all teachers have. It's arguably the most common and oldest fear. I'm sure the very first teacher in the very first one-room schoolhouse had the same fear, the fear of being unprepared. It's what keeps us up at night. When you dig deep into the feedback collected through RTA's reopening survey, you will see this fear is what prompted 89% of the respondents to say the district does not have the needed readiness level to begin hybrid instruction. It's all about preparedness. Teachers have been told we will be required to implement simultaneous instruction. We've been given three and a half hours of PD on this and we'll have another hour tomorrow. The surrounding suburban districts received anywhere from one to two weeks of PD before being asked to implement it. Why are we not worth the same investment? Does this sound like we are prepared? During the different PDS over the past two weeks, teachers were encouraged to put questions in the chat. We were promised they would get us answers. Hundreds of articulate questions were submitted. Two weeks later, all we've gotten is a fax page with two questions answered. When we asked for examples during these PDS, we were told to Google best practices. Does this sound like we're prepared? I understand the pressure you are all feeling to get our kids back to some sort of normalcy. We all want it. Every teacher I know wants to be back in the classroom rather than teaching virtually. Yet it still falls back to, are we prepared? I know we are the only district in Monroe County not offering some type of hybrid right now. However, I also want to remind you that we have something that often escapes attention.
Ms. Mundorf?
Like other districts in Monroe County, we hold the distinction of the most economically segregated school district in the entire country.
Ms. Mundorf, can you wrap it up, please? Wrap it up, please. Thank you, Ms. Mundorf. We appreciate your comments tonight. Please submit them in writing if you can as well. Thank you. Our next speaker coming into the room is Tina Bianchi. I hope I pronounced your name right, a staff member addressing the board regarding reopening of schools. Tina? Welcome, Ms. Bianchi. I'm going to set your clock now for two minutes for you to address the board. Welcome.
Thank you. If you go to the district site and read the FAQ pages about reopening, the instructional delivery model page says, teachers have the flexibility to utilize a combination of instructional materials and should connect with colleagues. This sounds like everyday, normal business that equates to figure it out on your own like you always do. Moving on to the PD page, there are many phrases there such as we will be and we are going to and other districts are. But nothing answers some of the most important questions being asked. What's the phase one data around attendance and COVID testing? Who will administer the invasive COVID tests to staff and students on a weekly basis? Why are we sacrificing months of hard work to get remote teaching under control only to upend everyone and lose out on much more instructional time than we can possibly gain? With vaccines on the horizon for educators, why can't we allow for most of those who want it to get it? Why is our professionalism and our safety so undervalued? Why aren't the board and all of the CEO staff also returning to in-person work? The superintendent has stated that schools are safe to open, but safe is very subjective. Where's the objective data to support this claim? If it's available, why isn't it being shared? But here is some data. Approximately 70% of parents chose or defaulted to continue with remote instruction. 89% of staff do not feel confident that the current plan is sufficient to keep us safe. This data is being ignored. If I taught a lesson in which 70% of my students did not reach the desired outcome and if I ignored that data, what kind of educator would I be? So it's deeply disturbing that no alternative plans have been considered at this time. There's a history of earned mistrust in this district. And I feel our top leaders are on the cusp of either helping us to heal or continuing to divide us. Rowing harder does not help if the boat is headed in the wrong direction and this boat is headed in the wrong direction.
Thank you, Ms. Bianchi. Your two minutes are up, but if you do have additional comments, we encourage you to email them as well. Okay, I actually see our student who was not here at the beginning of the meeting and is in the room. So I'm going to allow her to speak first. That is Des Garrick. So we're going to allow Des Garrick to speak first. And is just being let into the room right now. After that, we will move on to the next staff member. Des? Oh, you are muted, but when you're ready, you have two minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Um, so basically I wanted to talk about the reopening plans. And from a student point of view, sorry, I'm just not getting home. But I'm a senior at East High School. I've been very involved with various activities over the last four years of high school. I like to think of myself as a strong-minded student intellectually and mentally. But these last few months, I've really struggled with maintaining on pace with the curriculum as is in a remote setting. I've really lost my will for wanting to go to school. I find myself longing on to Zoom and just sitting there or scrolling through Facebook or watching Netflix or doing anything other than schoolwork. And as a student who's like typically I would never miss school. I've had perfect attendance throughout all of high school. I'd never miss school. I don't want to go to school and I really just like crave to be in the building. And just recently, I know a lot of my peers are really struggling with their mental health and not being able to be in the building. And the fact that there's like pushbacks from some teachers of not wanting to come to the building for reasons being vaccines or health reasons. And it's like, well, our suburban counterparts have been in the building in their schools since the beginning of the school year. And the in-person model, it's like, well, why can't we do it? Why is it any different for us? And why is our mental health not really taken into account as it should be? And it's like the end of the marking period is coming up. Have to get my grades up as a student. I just got into the U of R, so it's like, okay, I have to maintain those grades to be able to like continue and keep my acceptance. And it's like really hard to just keep that focus and keep being driven. And I don't think a lot of teachers understand how mentally broken a lot of us students are. We're really going through it and it's really hard and it's really depressing. So that's all I really want to say.
Thank you, Desiree. We appreciate your comments tonight. If you have any additional, please feel free to send them to us as well. Okay, moving on to our next speaker who is in the room. That is Cindy, Sydney Friedrich, a staff member addressing the reopen tools. Welcome, Sydney, and you have two.
Thank you. Okay, so I have concerns and questions regarding the change in bell schedule as well as the reopening of schools. The new bell schedule proposes an additional 90 minutes of screen time per day. One of the district's arguments for offering a hybrid option is to reduce screen time, but we are doing the opposite. Secondary students will now have six more hours of screen time per week under the hybrid model. My main concern with this additional screen time is the impact on MiFi data usage for our scholars. At the moment, students have 10 gigs of 4G data, which according to an infographic released by the district in October of 2020, students will run out of data after 20 hours of Zoom if a student were to keep their camera and microphone on during their classes. This means that we are currently only providing students with enough data to actively engage in four days of classes per month. Although students are still able to access the internet through 3G data, once the 4G runs out, this creates lag, garbled and delayed speech, frozen screen shares, and it makes it all but impossible to meaningfully participate in synchronous Zoom class. Will students receive an increase in their 4G MiFi data now that they will have an extra hour and a half of screen time every day? Or will scholars only have enough data to actively participate in class three days per month? We are encouraging passive learning behavior through the inequity of internet access and prioritizing the quantity of instructional minutes over quality. Furthermore, the bell schedule reduces lunch to 30 minutes. Our scholars that are remaining remote and received bag lunches from school buildings will not have enough time to go to the schools to pick up lunch, eat their meal and return to their afternoon class without being tardy. How can we better support these students? In December, secondary teachers were informed that they would spend the duration of the school year fully remote. I was excited to have consistency for both me and my students. Rituals and routines are crucial to our scholars. How does it serve the best interests of our students to upend all these rituals and routines as soon as students have gotten used to remote learning? I don't understand why we are adding chaos and confusion to our students during a tumultuous time in history. We will lose precious instructional minutes teaching new rituals and routines for hybrid, prioritizing the needs of the 20% of secondary students who choose hybrid over the 80% of students who opted to stay remote. In order.
I apologize. Your two minutes are up. I want to remind our speakers that you do have two minutes to address the board. That is only so that we can get through all of our speakers tonight. Also, the second thing I want to remind our speakers is if you are in the waiting room at this time, please make sure that your Zoom name is, is according to the speaker's list. I do see a couple of folks that have names that are not on the list. And I do want to make sure that you get a chance to speak, so please rename yourself so that you can be brought into the room. Our next speaker is Darka, a staff member, but is not in the waiting room. So I'm going to welcome Mr. Pablo Sierra, a staff member who is addressing the board regarding phase two of reopening plan. Mr. Sierra?
Thank you. I'd like the board to know that as a parent of two young children in the district, I'm 100% in of support. I'm 100% in support of reopening our schools under a hybrid model. Having two days a week of in-person instruction will help my first and third grader immensely. They have been struggling with their socialization, with their writing, with the reading and with remote instruction generally. We all know it's less than ideal and we all know it's causing considerable mental health just torture. Access to Chromebooks in the school building has never been the foundation of the K through six education and it cannot easily, once again, the return to in-person instruction. I firmly support Dr. Myers Small's reopening plan, which is backed by Monroe County Medical Act. I also support the principals and teachers who have gone out of their way to develop safe instructional plans for our. Be very clear about this statement issued by the RTA. This organization does not speak for the city of Rochester, for its families and much less for its the vast majority of RTA members do not even live in the city of Rochester. Their lobbying must not prevent our children from giving some of an education. The irony here is that while most RTA members benefit directly by having schools in their preventing children in this urban community from receiving in-person instruction. Our children deserve the option of attending twice if that is what is best for them, their families and for this community. Give us the option of having in-person option just as you benefit from that option with your communities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sierra. We appreciate you addressing the board tonight. I am moving on to the next speaker who signed up, who is Lisa Tilly, a staff member who's addressing the board regarding reopening of schools. Is Ms. Tilly with us? Doesn't appear so. So I'm going to move on to the next speaker who is Amy Schram, a staff member. Ms. Schram, welcome. You have.
Hi, thank you. Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, everybody, for allowing us to speak tonight and I'd like to first totally say that I am 100% in favor of being in front of my students in the art room and for us to be able to work together, for us to share supplies, for us to be working. That's nothing I want more than to be back in my art room. But because of COVID, I can't do that. Because of COVID and because of the plan, I'm being asked to push into every single classroom, hook up my computer, hook up a webcam, hook up to the Zoom mic, hook up to the smart board if there is that technology in the classroom. Well, I don't know. I'm going, walking into having to, you know, and I emailed the board. I emailed Dr. Myers Small, asking them if there's any way that you could lift the force pushing for essentials teachers in that elementary level. Because I believe it should be a building-based decision. I think that a blanket call for all essentials teachers to be pushed in is reckless and it's unnecessary. It's putting us and the students at risk because I have to travel from classroom to classroom to classroom. Some days, seven classes a day that I have to go around the school. Not to mention, we have a lot of blended classes, so therefore we're pushing and we're pulling students. And I just feel that because the numbers are low, that the students should be able to come to the art room. And I would be able to control the space. I would be able to control my technology, ensuring that I can do this. You know, the way that you're asking me to do. And so I'm asking you, please, turn the force pushing into a building-based decision. So I'm asking that. I'm also going to be asking a couple of questions that are coming from other teachers anonymous.
Ms. Schram?
Is that it?
Yes, your two minutes are up, but if you do have additional comments, please submit them in writing.
I will.
I appreciate the comments tonight. So our next speaker is Rakia Hardaway, staff member addressing the board regarding reopening of schools. Ms. Hardaway, are you with us? So, so I'm going to move on to Ms., oh wait.
I wasn't fast enough to try to get the video started.
No problem. Welcome. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Myers Small and commissioners of the board. I am a proud second-generation graduate of the Rochester City School District. I also have the privilege of being a second-generation teacher in the Rochester City School. And I am a proud resident of the city. Both of my parents are retired teachers as well. I have compiled some questions that have been asked and would like, we would like them to be answered. So I'm just going to read them off until you tell me I run out of time. Okay? So what research shows? So what research shows that changing schedules and structures in the middle of the year are beneficial to the students? Will teachers be given a camera so we can move around the classroom easier? Will teachers be given wireless microphones so they will be able to be heard by students who are remote while others are in person? We are told the safest place for kids is school. We're ignoring that they go home at night. If someone in the family or circle is infected, the student will carry it into school. How do we conduct small groups between remote and in-class students with one teacher? Are we going to have webcams for Zoom and microphones uh so students can see and hear us under our masks? Our students have been through so many changes and trauma over the last year and a half. Why are we changing their programs again? This doesn't seem to be what is best for students. How many in phase one have been COVID tested and what have the results been? What happens if a student refuses to wear a mask? Who will clean the classrooms in between class sessions? How will we get the answers? Will they be posted for everyone? How will we maintain a distance of six feet apart? How will this work with multiple teachers in the same classroom? If hybrid students should be working collaboratively, how shall the remote students get equitable time having to filter that out to hear teachers? How will resource and consultant services be provided to students? How will any of this work with kindergarteners? Are are our at-home students really going to be expected to be on their computers all day? What happens? I'm sorry. And finally, will we be receiving answers to these questions, to these concerns brought up? And if so, when and how? And I thank you all for your time. I understand these are difficult questions and decisions that have to be made. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Hardaway. Before you go, I just want to encourage you to please email those questions to the to board, um, Board of Education at RCSD K twelve. It's really important for a week for us to document. And if you do need a response, um, that is how we can facilitate that. Thank you. All right, I'm moving on next to our next speaker. Uh, that is Adam McIntyre Ross, a staff member regarding reopening of schools. Adam, welcome. You have two.
Thank you for having me. First, uh, to all the students and the parents who are concerned about this. The teachers are there with you. We all want to go back and teach in a classroom. Nobody thinks that remote is the most ideal way to do this. I'm an art teacher, and this is definitely not the most ideal way to do this. It's hard to get people the supplies they need and so on. But for me, this isn't, the the bigger issue is not about being able to teach simultaneously in the in the hybrid model. Um, I think it's maybe not the most effective way to do it. But my bigger concern is a health and safety issue. Uh, the district has released plans on what they want to do, what they want to see in the classroom. They want to see the the cleaning supplies that are readily available and things being cleaned between lessons. They want to make sure that there are Plexiglas Plexiglas dividers between students when whenever possible in all the rooms. Um, and I I gotta say, I'm I'm not seeing that so far. I'm already part of phase one, and I'm going into a school and teaching for one period. Because it's a high school and the special, the special requirements are have been met. But the the promises and the the plans that have been made for this, the safe reopening, the safety part of it are, it's not happening. I don't blame the administrators. Administrators are trying their darndest to keep up with everything, but it seems like there's a large communication lag in addition to a lack of clarity. And I I don't blame building services either because we we're not funded. Uh, you know, it's it's very frustrating to hear people say, well, the suburbs, these other schools are going back, and they're being successful. Well, that's great, but they also have a lot more uh resources than we do. Right? It's no secret that that we're struggling for cash for just to keep enough teachers in the district. You know, I was laid off over the summer and got called back, fortunately. But I I think that there is a major problem that's going to be brewing here, especially in light of the new strains of COVID that have been appearing. Without proper uh safety and health supplies and techniques being employed across all the buildings and every room all the time.
Mr. McIntyre.
It's gonna be a problem.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. I apologize, but your time is up. If you have additional comments, though, please submit those in writing, and we'll be sure um to make sure that all board members receive your comments and they're posted to the website. I'm moving on to our next speaker, who is Mr. Anthony McCabe. He should be entering the room now, a staff member addressing the board regarding reopening of schools. Mr. McCabe.
Hi there. Give me a second because I have two things.
Okay, you have two minutes, sir.
Sorry about that. I had a a stream going and I had two feeds going in my ear. So I had something to read, uh, but I'm just gonna kind of go off the cuff because of the two-minute thing. But, you know, and after seeing some of these parents speak, I I'm kind of sick that our our parents are now in the situation that they have, they feel that they have to be angry and pitted at somebody, and it it seems to be coming against the teachers. This situation is no win for anybody. I think everybody understands that. Parents are rightfully angry. A lot of it's probably a lack of communication, inconsistent miscommunication. Um, I mean, I had students today asked, are you guys going back? Are you planning on going back? They didn't even, they didn't even know that was an option, a lot of them. You know, and some of them said, well, we're trying, but we don't know how, and we haven't gotten a response, or we're on a waiting list. And it just screaming just dysfunction, which is just, you know, a hallmark, unfortunately. But um, some other things that I was gonna address, you know, at the beginning of the reopening process, we were told that teachers would have their own rooms, at least in our school, a teacher at Franklin. We got an email yesterday saying we can't accommodate that. Now, uh, it's just one of the many one-eighties we've gotten. No less than the major one-eighty of finding that we would be remote in the beginning. You know, finding out in December, and then two weeks later finding out, okay, no, we're going back. We need to go back. Uh, and I think everybody agrees with that, but it needs to be done, right? I have students who really want to go back, and they think it's our fault. As teachers, we want to stay home. And it's really, it's it's really awful. And I think that um that needs to be addressed. And it, this isn't, this is literally a matter of life and death. And, you know, I try as a science teacher to explain the science to them. I apologize, yes. Um, but I just, please, we just need more time. Just please take more time for a better plan. Make us feel like we'll all be safe once we go.
Your time is up.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCabe. And we do have uh five additional speakers, but I am not seeing anyone else in the Zoom room who is labeled to speak tonight. Um, if you are in the Zoom room and a plan to address the board, please rename yourself. I, the names that I'm seeing are not um, they're not accurately named uh with 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 actual uh first and last names. We have some kind of funny names here. So if if you are trying to address the board, please rename yourself um a real name so that we can let you into the room. Aside from that, though, uh, Vice President Elliott, Nancy Bremen, John Pavone, Jenny Stanbury, Leah Elliott, and um, our last speaker, Matthew La Bonas. I do know he did just email us to let us know that he will not be able to make it and has submitted written comments. So um outside of them, uh, we, that should be concluding our speakers portion of the meeting.
Thank you. Um, I know that this is a really difficult situation. We have some of our parents um who want their children to attend school, students want to attend school. You know, we have, um, you know, teachers who, to our concern, it really is a difficult decision that we have to make. But we're going to do the best that we can in making sure that the students and the staff who um will attend our schools are safe. Uh, we will be aggressive about that. But at the same time, this is, this is a moving target. Uh, we don't always have all the answers to this. Uh, I know that the superintendent is doing the best that she can do and her staff. We thank you for uh those um criticisms that we can take back and can investigate those. This is about continuous improvement, but it's also a moving target. And so thank you for sharing um your concerns. I thank the parents and others who are supporting the district and the board about the decision to reopen. And um, we just thank you for um, thank you for your comments. So with that being said, we'll go to um the superintendent and uh the reopening plan update. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Vice President Elliott. Good evening to you, to all of our board commissioners, our staff, and those who are listening on Facebook and YouTube. Tonight, we did hear multiple perspectives on reopening, and certainly many individuals uh expressed their concerns or wanted to have questions answered. Tonight, we have two staff members, two of my colleagues, uh, Dr. Kathy Black and Mr., who is our chief academic officer, and Mr. Glenn Vanderwater, who oversees information management and technology, or IMNT, are going to be addressing the board and others on two areas that predominantly have been comment commonly discussed tonight, and that's the learning structure, the the instructional plan involving simultaneous instruction as well as technology. So I give the floor to my colleagues who will be presenting information to the board and others. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Again, you want to go? I can't even see myself.
Sure, I'll go first. Uh, good evening, Commissioners. Uh, tonight, I'd like to give you an update from IMNT. I'm going to talk about uh phase two, phase three, our hotspot deployment, and basically where we stand with uh technology as a whole. So I'm going to share my screen and begin my presentation. Very good. Thank you. Uh, so again, this is an update from IMNT. Phase two, and I'm just need to readjust my screen here. Talking about phase two, and as we enter into phase two, I know that there's been a lot of concern around one-to-one devices for our students in pre-kindergarten through fifth grade. As we look at our pre-kindergarten through second grade students that will be returning in phase two, they will have access to iPads in a one-to-one basis. We'll be able to distribute iPads amongst the school that have already been deployed to students that are there. If there's a need for additional iPads, we do have some additional iPads that we can deploy to schools to ensure that every pre-K through second grade student that is coming back in in the hybrid model will have access to a device for sole, for their sole use. For students in grades three through five, we're going to take the existing Chrome boxes that reside in some of the classrooms. The Chrome boxes are very different than, are somewhat different than a Chromebook. The Chrome box is basically a monitor with a keyboard, and if you can imagine, basically, an Apple TV is the Chromebook that adheres to the back of the monitor. So when students interact with the Chrome box, it's the same interaction that they have when they're interacting uh with within with use of a Chromebook. So once again, with students coming back in grades three through five, we'll be able to redistribute Chrome boxes. We'll also be able to provide Chromebooks for if there's any shortages. So all students in grades three through five will have sole use of a device specifically for them. Our students that are coming back in sixth grade, we will be issuing a district-issued backpack so that they too, they will be able to carry their device to and from school. Therefore, they'll also have a one-to-one opportunity. Talking about phase three, all students in phase three will carry their device to and from school. We'll be deploying Chrome uh Chromebook backpacks, computer bags, for our students in grades seven through eight. This will allow them, again, to take their their devices to and from school. Also, our students who are eighth graders last year and are now ninth grade students, they will be issued backpacks also. So all of our students in grades six through twelve will be able to bring their devices to and from school. I'm going to talk a little bit about uh classroom technology. Uh, webcams and microphones will be made available for teachers that request them, and I'm going to show how teachers can simply go into our Rock Connect page and um order a webcam or a microphone. Uh, it's all plug-and-play. No software needs to be downloaded. I'll I'll talk a little bit more about that when I show how how that, how that how how those devices are ordered. Uh, front of the classroom technology, all of our technicians um will go through each of the classrooms for each phase two and phase three to ensure that every classroom and all of our classrooms do have a smartboard in them. And the far majority of our classrooms, if not a hundred percent of our classrooms, will also have a desktop computer in the front of the classroom. Uh, Chromebook repairs. So we will continue, and I understand some of the board members have had this experience. Uh, Chromebook repairs will continue to happen at the electronic lockers. And we have electronic lockers located at the Wilson Foundation Campus, the Franklin Campus, Monroe, and Jefferson. So that, again, as students may have issues with devices that need to be repaired, they can go to those um locations again and swap out a device at that time. The instructional technology TOAs are offering office hours four days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. These are drop-in opportunities for our staff members to come in, ask any questions they may have concerning simultaneous instruction or the integration of hardware and or software technologies um into their lesson plans. And hotspots and MiFi's, and I'll talk a little bit about that now before I um share my um my screen. The hotspots and MiFi's, as you know, we've deployed close to twelve thousand hotspots that came with ten gigabytes of data. And over the past three months, October, we didn't count September because there was a half month in there, October, November, and December, we pulled the data usage from the twelve thousand MiFi's that we deployed. And approximately one thousand five hundred students use six gigabytes of data or more per month. All of the students that use six gigabytes of data or more per month have received or in very short order will be receiving an unlimited hotspot. So the concerns of um devices running out of data, the interruption of instruction due to uh data expiring uh will no longer be an issue. And again, we took this data over the past three months. I'm going to go and share a different screen here quickly. As many of you know, this is Rock Connect. If teachers would like to order a webcam or a microphone, they can come here to our help desk icon and wait a moment to get logged in. Once logged in, scrolling down the page, you'll see click on Request a Device. Once you click on Request a Device, what kind of device would you like to request? Would you like to request a webcam for simultaneous instruction or wireless microphone for science? And you may want to do both. That would require two separate tickets only because we keep good track of the equipment that we deploy. But in this case, we'll select webcam. What is your location? A teacher staff member would select their location, their room number. We would also need to know which phase the teacher is returning in. Is it phase two or phase three? This will help us prioritize our work. We'll select phase two. The teacher will then agree to return the equipment when IMNT requests. And the teacher will also agree that they intend to use the device and will engage in any necessary training. The last piece I would like to talk about as I manipulate my screen here a little bit will be the online professional development opportunities that teachers have. Just need to go back and share my screen. By going to the RCSD Learns webpage, the staff icon, coming down to online support, we talked a little bit about this earlier, or I talked about this. These are the off-office hours. These are the off, office hours that our Instructional Technology TOAs are available to answer any questions or concerns staff members may have. We also offer simultaneous instruction PDs. We've offered several of these so far. These have been advertised through the Office of Professional Learning. They're advertised on RCSD Learns, which is really our hub for information, and also on the Professional Development True North Logic. So with that being said, I would be available or be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Glenn. Appreciate the presentation. Are there any questions? Let me just look at the screen. Okay, Commissioner Malloy?
Thank you. I have quite a few questions, actually. First and foremost, thank you, Glenn, for, for that presentation that actually answers quite a few of my questions that I have. But I do have a few more, just follow-up questions. First of all, I'm glad to see that the students will have access to Chromebooks. That, you know, that's, that's very important because as of just the end of last week, teachers were under the impression that students wouldn't have access. So I think that's a great example of a concern that the, the district has worked really hard to address and has found a solution for. So thank you for that. That, that helps me understand a bit more. Um, I, it's my understanding that there were over 2,000 either webcams or microphones that were just recently located or found within the district. So I'm assuming those are the ones that are being deployed now?
We're actually, we purchased them through Title IV funding, and they are being deployed upon request. Again, every time a ticket is submitted, we push that device out as quickly as possible to get it into the hands of, of, of the staff members so that it can be put to use.
And Glenn, how long does that normally take to deploy, once there has been a request for a webcam or microphone? How, how long will that take until the teacher has that to practice with?
We're able to get it onto the delivery trucks. We receive a ticket on day one, no later than the second or third business day is it on the delivery truck. Now, once it gets to the building, it's really in the custodian's hands. So that may vary from building to building. But I can say that the following day or the day after the device is put on the truck and delivered to the building. And those, those delivery trucks make, make daily deliveries throughout the district.
And how many have been deployed thus far for Phase Two reopening?
We had not pushed them to the buildings yet because no teachers have, have come in. But we have just over 1,000 requests for webcams. I don't know how many we have for microphones, but I do want to say we are prioritizing staff members. And the reason why I'm saying that is because many of our schools, take number 17, for example, had an audio system built into each classroom through FMP. So teachers already had the lapel mic and all of those, and, and, and that piece of equipment. So there would be no, no need for, unless it may be like an art teacher or a pull-out room, there, there'd be very little need for lapel microphones. So again, teachers can use proximity as a instructional tool. I used that all the time when I was in the classroom, getting around, walking around the classroom, and that provides freedom around the classroom. But we prioritize deployment based on the technology that's already at the buildings.
Right, so we've had 1,000 requests so far. How many have actually been installed as of right now? How many have been installed?
None have been installed at this point. They were all, again, they're all plug-and-play.
We're asking people to come back in one week.
They'll, they'll be there.
None have been installed as of this point. So we need simultaneous instruction to happen next week. But none of those 2,000 webcams and microphones have been installed at this point.
The teacher will be installing them by simply plugging them into their computer and placing them on top of their plug-and-play. So IMNT will not be installing yet, no. We're palletizing them now, actually, I should say.
Okay, all right. And then I guess another question that I have is, um, how much time do we anticipate that our Phase Two teachers will have prior to opening for their own classroom preparation? Um, how, what are, what are the anticipated number of hours that they will have? I'm assuming they're not going to be able to get into their classrooms to do a lot of the heavy lifting that needs to be done until they have all of that delivered to them so they can practice and get set up. Do we have any idea, like, when that'll be completed by?
When, when teachers can return. I would, I would ask maybe Mike Schmidt to pop on for that. It's an operational question when teachers can enter the buildings. It's, my understanding is that teachers can begin coming in, even as of today. They would start, start to be able to come in. But anything further than that, I would defer to maybe Mike.
I'll, I'll ask Mike then at some point. Um, so I guess another tech question that I have would be, you know, when are the specific? I saw on the presentation that there will be some office hours in professional development times, right? And that's good, we all need that. But can you tell me specifically, when are those office hours and PD times? Have they been made available to our staff? Do they know when those hours are?
Yeah, they've been, they've been, they've been communicated through three different modalities, through the Office of Professional Learning, through the, through our, basically our learning hub, which is RCSD Learns, and also on the teachers' professional development webpages through True North Logic. And again, if I share my screen very quickly here, and I go back, you can see the dates and times of when, on January 27th, there will be a simultaneous livestream professional development. And you can see that it's offered on two different times on January 27th. Also here, the 25th, 26th, 28th, and 29th. These are the office hours for Instructional Technology TOAs, excuse me, that are available. And if you, like, for example, we want to go and visit Brian's office hours here, we're going to type in our first name and their employee ID number, submit that, and Brian will have you in the room and be able to answer any specific question any staff member has. So we try to make this very individualized for.
Excellent. Can you show me the, perhaps, the calendar for the week prior? And what, were we offering the same professional development last week for teachers or the week before?
I don't know if I can go back. We were, yes, to answer your question, we were offering the same exact office hours. Off of the top of my head, I, I know last Wednesday, we offered, I believe, two simultaneous instruction PDs. Kathleen will be able to talk to that during her TNL information.
And then when do we anticipate the MiFi devices for our students being deployed?
They're already actively being deployed. We have deployed, like we talked about earlier, 12,000 of the 10-gigabyte hotspots. Any student that uses 6 gigabytes or more per month, and this is collecting three months' worth of data, any student that uses six or more, that not even exhausting their 10 gigabytes, does receive an unlimited hotspot. So that there should be no student in the Rochester City School District that has any kind of interruption in terms of connectivity. Currently, we have 2,900 of those hotspots. We're also going to be identifying students with multiple, pardon me, families with multiple siblings. For example, we may have a student that goes to Edison Tech and then may have three siblings at school number 17. That would be a great family to identify, to get four hotspots back and give them an unlimited device so that they can stream 24/7. We can take those 10-gigabyte hotspots back and redeploy them, is what we're doing right now, to our pre-kindergarten students. Because as you may be aware, earlier, we, that was, that was something we weren't allowed to do through our agreement with the 1 million project, but there's been some flexibility there.
Okay, thank you. And then my, my final question is, um, where can board members go to find the professional development training videos that you talked about for simultaneous instruction? Have those been made yet? Because as of yesterday afternoon on the connection show, we were told that those hadn't been made yet and wouldn't be available until the end of this work week. So I'm just wondering if those have been made and if they're available for people to get started on.
Yes, when you come, and I'm sorry, I'm going through this again, and hopefully you can see my screen okay. When I come here to online support, and again, I apologize, my screen is reloading here. If you look at pre-recorded tutorials here at the bottom. So all of those pre-recorded tutorials are right there and available for anybody that's missed any of the professional developments. They can look back at what was shared in previous professional developments.
But do we have the specific videos related to simultaneous instruction?
Yes, those are the simultaneous instruction livestreamed videos that were, that were recorded, and teachers can go there to, to look at those historical videos.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Malloy, Commissioner LeBron?
Well, Commissioner Malloy asks a lot of the questions I have, but I do want to just hone in on the deployment of the 1,000 requests that you mentioned. And I just wanted to understand if that was, that request is coming in for Phase Two or for the teachers that are currently already in the building in Phase One?
It's, it's a, it's a smattering of, the, the teachers that are there right now, I know that we've been deploying equipment as they requested because they're there live, live right now. Our teachers that are in Phase Two and Phase Three will receive the devices based on, based on the, their priority. So Phase Two is our priority. And again, we're going to be deploying those. I, I can send a notification out when they'll go, but I believe they'll be going out tomorrow or the next day.
I'm sorry. I, I just wanted to understand, like, if it was the teachers that are going to be coming in. And I just want to clarify that it's not next week, but it's close. We have till February 8th because I'm on a clock down for Sophia to return too. So February 8th is when we are opening. Um, the other questions I had, I, I'm glad you mentioned the FMP schools that had the technology upgraded because, yes, we do have buildings who, as part of the FMP, were upgraded. And I recall that we actually had resolutions come before us for additional pay-for-training on those, both last year and the year before. And I questioned that. I was like, why do we have to pay the trainers? And this should have been, but we approved it. And so hopefully, hopefully, some of those individuals that received the training are still here because that's, you know, that's unintentional consequence as well from mid-year cuts. I did want to go back, though, and ask about the Chromebook repair. So yes, I was, I have been one of the commissioners who had a repair done during COVID, had to come to the locker. But how do parents make a request for their student's Chromebook if they're having issues with it to get repaired? Is it through that same locker system?
Yes, it is. So staff come to the central office locker system. Students, parents, go to the four locations that we have, again, Wilson Foundation, the Franklin Campus, Monroe, and Jefferson. And right now, we have 10 building technicians that service all of the equipment for the Rochester City School District. We have four technicians on full-time Chromebook repair so that when a parent needs to have a Chromebook swapped out, right now, we're in the position that a parent can go to a locker, drop off a broken device, and immediately pick up a, a device that works. We don't want to have parents have to drop off a device, go home, wait three days for their, their device to be ready, ready for use. So we have that ability to, we, we have that ability for instant drop-off and pickup. Again, we have four technicians on 100% Chromebook repair, two technicians on window device repair, two technicians on help desk calls, and then two technicians for all of the classrooms in the city school district. All of us are all, all hands on deck, getting classrooms ready, making sure that the software updates because a lot of these devices haven't been turned on in 10 months. And you know what it's like when you turn on a computer that hasn't been turned on in 10 months. The amount of time you wait for the, everything to happen in the background and all of the packages, all the package updates. So that's how we're deploying our staff. That's how we've deployed our equipment, and that's how we do the transition of devices.
Okay, um, so I do appreciate that there's four sites. But I also am concerned about parents who don't have transportation and if there's any way that they could essentially communicate it to the school and if we've created an alternative system for those parents who don't have transportation to make it out to those sites to do that.
We, our whole team, IMNT, along with working with building administration, when there's a parent that doesn't have transportation or has transportation obstacles, I don't know of an instance where that's been a hurdle that we haven't been able to overcome, whether it's a building-based administrator or somebody from IMNT going to the house, picking up a device, dropping off a device and such. So it's not come across my desk as an obstacle.
Okay, thank you. And then the last kind of comment feedback I have is, so the deployment, you guys at IMT get the service tickets and then fulfill the request by making sure it gets loaded onto a truck and then into the schools. And having worked in our own district, so this is our district, and not under this leadership and team, so I always want to remind folks that I'm not talking about this leadership or team. But I do recall plenty of times where materials and books came in in pallets, and they just sat somewhere in the building, and we would have to try to figure out and try to track it down where, when. And, and then it could be months before we even have ever had access to those books and materials. So I just would feel better if there was an opportunity. I think this is an opportunity to clean up that process and ensure that every building is following the same protocol, that the devices are coming in and that they're deployed right then and there to the teachers in the classrooms that requested them. Because of, and I'm, this is not to accuse anybody, I just want to put it out there. This is my own personal experience, having seen pallets just sit in rooms, and nobody know what happened to the request. And, and I've, I've known staff that try to track down things that they've requested, like printers or paper, and just trying to figure out what happened to it. I would just personally ask that we figure out a way to clean up that process so that it's more streamlined.
Every principal in the district was emailed yesterday, a specific email for their building, what to be on the lookout for in, in terms of Chromebooks and, and other devices that are coming their way. So really, we, we put it into the hands of, you know, IMNT, working with facilities and Mike's team. We work really well as far as getting the devices there. And we've tried to communicate, or I know we have communicated, to each individual building what's coming to their building so that administrators, the, the principal, as the building leader, knows what's coming. But that's a great point you make, and that's one of the remedies that we've implemented to resolve it, knowing that there's a lot on people's plates and so that these important pieces of equipment don't get forgotten or, or left in place.
Is that it? Commissioner LeBron?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank, thank you, Glenn, for all of your hard work, you and your team. Madam Superintendent, you have a question?
Yes, it's a question, just a logistical one, Glenn. Your presentation tonight, can we isolate that and post that as a resource just from start to finish with yours? So it goes over the technology aspects or, so that's my first question. And if not?
Absolutely.
We can. So if we could just isolate that and then update that, and then maybe even just send a communication that tonight at the Board of Education meeting, a presentation occurred relative to technology on both the student and the staff side. It's located at this particular link, and then people can click on it.
Absolutely. I work with Metasol on that, and we'll get that.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy?
Thank you. Sorry, Glenn, I don't mean to pepper you with so many questions tonight. I know I'm giving you a hard time.
That's okay. Go ahead.
I love you, come on. Um, I, I'm wondering if you could just, perhaps, is there a way that you could just share the simultaneous teaching video with us? Can you play it somehow so that the community, or at least the start of it? Is there any way that you could just show us what that looks like?
So I just want to clarify that my expectation, because I made this request last week, was that Ms. Black was going to demonstrate that with some staff. So I just want to put it out there. I don't know if there's a video, but I, I saw that he mentioned the video, but I would like us to have an actual live demo.
Oh, yeah, of course, yeah.
And understand what it looks like.
And kudos, Commissioner LeBron, for, for asking for that last week. Yes, entirely. I guess I'm just curious to see how that, how that looks. If you could just click on it maybe for me and show me what's, what's there.
Let's, Commissioner Malloy, pardon me.
Just want to make sure that there's clarity because not, we don't, I don't think, and correct me if I'm wrong, we have not taped yet actual lessons. So if that's what you're asking for, Commissioner Malloy, there's not that. There is PD.
No, I just wanted to see what, in terms of simultaneous instruction, what's already been put out there. That's, that's all.
Can you see my screen? Can you see my screen okay here, the video? Okay, very good. Hold on here one second. It's powered teacher pro. I'm sorry, I'm navigating here. Oh, here we go. I'm sorry, I I clicked too high up. Here's, here's Kathleen Mohan. This is about a Zoom, oh simultaneous instruction, pardon me. Simultaneous instruction. I haven't navigated this deep in yet. Student views, Chromebooks, Chromebooks in the classroom.
So it's nice to see that there are resources there. I'm just very curious about the, you know, the actual simultaneous instruction which that our staff now has, they have to start in in a week. You know, any resource. I'd be panicking as a teacher right now, you know, if I had to do this.
No, I I understand completely. It's powered. I'm going to have to go back and and look here to see where those are posted. I'm I can't. And it should be easier to find. Teachers shouldn't have to go through this many clicks. And I'll put that down as something that'll be advertised and easier to navigate to.
Thank you.
They bring that up, but that shouldn't be that difficult to to navigate to that. So thank you.
Commissioner Adams?
Yeah, I'm I'm one of those board members that had to utilize both of my daughter's Chromebooks at different times. Broke down. And it was a very, very easy process of getting them replaced. Strictly on their lunch break, I was able to take them at different times there and within five minutes, it was a replacement thing. It was no drop-off and come back. So I really, me and my kids, my daughters, both appreciate the way that was set up. So I just wanna thank you for that, Glenn.
Thank you. And that means a lot to our team from from everybody here on this. It it doesn't just come to me, it's everybody within IMT working together. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. So Madam Superintendent, we're on to Dr. Black's presentation?
Yes.
All right, Dr. Black?
All right, let me share my screen. Oh, I don't have to, yay. All right, good evening, board members, commission, board commissioners and community members. I am here bringing you the instructional update on simultaneous instruction, where I'm sure you have a lot of questions and concerns to address. So hopefully through our time together, we'll be able to unpack some of what we need to address. Next slide. All right, so just as a highlight, I wanna remind everybody that simultaneous instruction is when our teachers deliver instruction to both their in-person students and their remote students at the same time. Next slide. So I'm gonna spend some time here. And on the back end of this presentation, there's an additional memo that will help unpack some additional pieces of information. But I'm talking about the phase two and phase three launch of simultaneous instruction. And at this point, I wanna remind us that phase two instruct, phase one instruction is already happening. And so there are already teachers in buildings doing simultaneous instruction for our phase one students. We recognize that phase two and phase three brings another number of students and teachers to the building. And I'm gonna share with you a little bit about what we've done in preparation of that launch. The first thing I wanna highlight is around our professional development experiences. We've offered sessions on best practices and content for simultaneous instruction throughout the month of January. So we had a livestream session on the 13th, and then we had a number of additional content sessions on the 20th of January. And we have another set of sessions being offered on tomorrow. We're constantly adding sessions and revising based on what we hear from the field and teacher need. So we look forward to continuing support both with the launch of phase two and three and through the implementation of phase two and three. We've been asked around models and demonstrations. I heard Commissioner LeBron asked me to come and demonstrate. So that is underway. But I wanna also add that video collection is also being done for teachers who are in phase one, who have RCSD students in front of them and have been implementing the model for about two and a half weeks now. Our first video with raw footage is scheduled to become onboard on Thursday. And there are also some videos that have been done by the math department that breaks out math instruction more deliberately. As we go into phase two and phase three, we're hopeful that other teachers will be willing to have themselves videotaped and captured in addition to myself, so that we can use those opportunities as examples to build our practice. And the third thing we've done in preparation for phase two and phase three is doing a lot of knowledge gathering and management. So the TNL team, our content directors, our requisite TOAs have been scouring lots of places to look for best practices, both lessons learned and lessons that people don't wanna learn again, to find additional resources to share with our teams and build our content. We are also scheduling additional opportunities for us to visit and collaborate with neighboring districts. Some of the in-person visits are a little bit more challenging to negotiate because of COVID restrictions. But a lot of our partners, both far and wide, have made themselves available for both our internal central office staff and in upcoming our teachers to be able to then see other examples of simultaneous instruction in play. So we're doing a lot of building our capacity to provide supports for our teachers who have to implement simultaneous instruction. Next slide. So I wanna just kinda highlight the two things that have come up a lot. I won't spend a lot of time on instructional technology because Glenn covered that exhaustively, and that's very exciting for us to know that our teachers and our students will have one-to-one options to build out what's happening in classrooms. In terms of instructional materials, what we're asking, what we're thinking about, or what we're recommending is that when teachers think about their instructional decisions that they're making, when they're planning instructional lessons, when they're trying to figure out whether it's a shared reading lesson or a direct instruction in math, they are figuring out and working with both their teams and their colleagues to determine what instructional materials are appropriate for each lesson. So when we're thinking about planning, we know that sometimes kids have to have text in front of them. Sometimes it's good for them to turn pages. Sometimes it's good for them to use a screen. And as we're building out lessons and instructional supports, we're asking that teachers think about the kinds of lessons we wanna create and then how we can offer supports to make that so. There's also been a lot of conversation around instructional materials like books and pencils and paper. And we know that those things have to be provided both in classrooms and be provided to students who might be remote. And we've been deploying materials all along, so that won't stop as we move into our hybrid environment. Next slide. So in terms of ongoing support, so one of the things that's really important about teacher development and implementing any model is the ongoing supports that occur after you begin. So there's one thing to offer professional development as a sit-and-get or professional development as a long-term engagement. There's another thing to be able to support and develop teachers once they're in the midst of the work. And so as we move from giving professional development prior to phase two and phase three launch, we are committed to doing and implementing job-embedded professional development once simultaneous instruction launches. So no better way to help teachers get better or to figure out what works for kids than to be in the midst with them and say, here's how we change things, what have we done differently, what would you imagine doing? And so we're really leaning into some job-embedded professional development supports. In addition to, as Glenn mentioned, the content directors are amping up their increased office hours from all of our departments. So we also will have office hours for teachers to get individualized one-on-one support on content areas. And then we're outfitting and thinking about how do we provide opportunities for teachers to lesson plan and collaborate both across and within the district on how to articulate instruction. At the end of the day, we know that we have Wednesdays where we're providing professional development. And we're hopeful that we'll use Wednesdays also for collaboration across the district. Next slide. So I wanted to take a moment, and I know there's a lot of questions, but I wanna take a moment and just provide some additional supporting rationale around why we opted to elect to do simultaneous instruction. So there was a conversation, there's been conversations about instructional minutes and time on task. One of the rationales or reasons why we selected simultaneous instruction is because it increases the amount of instructional minutes that students have access to in both veins. While we have given guidance around the instructional diet, so how many minutes should be in a content area, we've given additional guidance to teachers on how many of those minutes should be direct instruction and how many of those minutes should be asynchronous or individualized instruction. So using the simultaneous model, we are actually increasing the amount of direct teacher time that students get across the board. Additionally, there was a big concern for us to work very hard to maintain the classroom teacher assignments in the student cohort so that students and teachers could maintain and build upon relationships they had previously established. The simultaneous instruction model allows that to be so. So in most cases, we were able to keep our students and our teachers together. And students and teachers then have the ability to build on what they've done over the course of the past four months and getting to know each other, figuring out who wants to speak, how do we use a convo talk, and do that within their classroom communities that they've already established. Finally, while not high on the instructional decision-making matrix, there were some financial considerations and resource allocation and things that we thought about in terms of if we were to do a different hybrid model, and there are other models out there, what are the implications that that be on staffing? Could we accommodate increased staffing? Could we accommodate equity and parity around who's receiving in-person kids and remote kids? Could we think about equity and parity around class size? And what we came back down to is that with a lot of effort and a positive-facing orientation for all of us, myself included, that being able to have teachers support their students who wanna choose the hybrid model and be in-person and students who wanna remain in a remote model at home, keeping that classroom community as a collective and asking instruction to happen in that way was our best decision. So I'll pause there and poised for any questions that anyone may have for me. Like I, and I see, I see my two, I'm not facilitating, so let me step back, ma'am.
Commissioner Malloy, you have a question?
All right, thank you, Dr. Black. She's like, oh gosh. Here we go. All right, so first and foremost, I am, as a teacher, incredibly excited to see kids back in our buildings, finally, right? We need to be back in school and nothing compares to that face-to-face instruction. I have some major concerns, however, about how quickly things are happening and just making sure we're, you know, dotting our i's and crossing the t's. So I have a few questions we're gonna ask her. First and foremost, I I was unsure when you mentioned videos underway. Can you explain, what does that mean? I was unclear on that terminology.
So in the previous board meeting, there was a request for both demonstration and model lessons, both for myself and from others in the field. We recognize that it's really important to get videos of our teachers and our kids. In time permitting, we were able to secure some phase one teachers, so teachers who have been with their kids for about two and a half weeks, who are willing to make their pack or practice public. And so our first teacher is being videotaped on Thursday.
Okay, so that's not being done until tomorrow, or Thursday rather, sorry, today's Tuesday.
Yes.
Thursday, and then that will be like edited, I'm assuming. When will that actually be available for our phase two teachers who have to start in a week?
So I think that there are some, I'll take, I'll take a step back. So there's gonna be some raw footage available, and we all know how raw footage looks when we're getting it from kids. And I think out of respect for the teacher and the kids, there's a notion of can we look at that as raw footage? Or do we have to edit it to make it receivable for people? So I'm saying, we're turning it around pretty quickly, and that's only our first teacher. So there are other teachers who are in the wings.
So we, we only have one video at this point available?
Yep. That starts, that we're only gonna have the first video that gets videotaped tomorrow. There are subsequent ones that are gonna be made available.
Okay, so there are currently no videos out there on simultaneous instruction.
So let me be, so I wanna be real clear, there are video, there are so demonstrations of teachers, physical teachers, with physical babies doing simultaneous instruction are not available yet. There are videos of staff members giving best practices around simultaneous instruction, but those are not demonstrations. The first demonstration video will be collecting raw footage tomorrow with more to come.
Okay, thank you. So that was one question. And then my next one, in your experience in visiting our various district buildings, which of our buildings, in your opinion, will need the most support?
Oh, so I'm gonna actually say I can't speak to that at this point. I've only been in one building to now, to date. I've been able to visit some classrooms via video instruction, and I actually think that despite building configuration, that all of our teachers, and given the technology capacity that we have, being the laptop, the desktop, the smartboard, potential webcam and microphone, all buildings have the potential to do this well. We just have to work together to make it happen.
Okay, all right, thank you for that. And then I do have just a couple more questions. So how many of our schools currently have wait lists for hybrid instruction? I've just told you how much I support hybrid instruction. We need that face-to-face instruction taking place. I know that 70% of our families have opted to remain remote, which I respect that decision too. But I'm hearing, well, my own children are on a wait list and stuff too. How many schools currently have wait lists for hybrid instruction? And why aren't all families who want hybrid, like, don't we want choice for our families? Like, why don't all families have access to hybrid if that's what they want and need?
Okay, so I can talk to the first part in terms that all schools who have children who want to come back for hybrid are maintaining a wait list. I do not have the the actual number of how many schools, but all schools have that option to have a wait list running should space become available. In terms of responding to choice, we do have a process in place where when space becomes available and we're able to accommodate for transportation and if the school chiefs and or Mike wanna jump in here as this is partly operations, we will have the opportunity to reach out to, again, as space becomes available, to accommodate additional students who want to opt into the hybrid model.
I guess follow up with that, Commissioner Malloy, also. We certainly, in the Friday letter, can send where we are as far as waitlist. That's not an issue by school, by grade level. We have that information. The other thing that we have to be mindful, we did choose to, for elementary case six on Monday, Tuesday, right, and then 712, Thursday, Friday. Our classrooms, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, can only hold 12. So if they go above that, then they would, you know, we could potentially, I suppose, look at them having another teacher, but then you get into teacher of record and some of those other pieces, so.
Yeah, I understand the beds piece and stuff, but I guess my concern is what if in that original survey that went out, what if 70% of our families had chosen hybrid? Would we have been able to accommodate that in our planning? I I guess that my concern is, it seems to me that there are a lot of families out there who want hybrid, who wanna be in the science is telling us that it's safe for kids to come back to school. I guess I'm not understanding how we're about to start phase two and then phase three, and we can't really seem to guarantee a hybrid option or model. To me, that strikes me as like, like inequity in a way, that we can't make that available to any student who would want to come back in person.
Well, part of it is that again, we built our our plan, right, on how we were gonna move forward based on the responses that we had. And at that time, you know, we had said, that's the decision. We're opening it up to make sure that it's more flexible to accept more students. Had we had 70%, we'd have to look at a different model. And we would have a different phase two and a different phase three, frankly. So, and it may have looked like a Monday, Tuesday, and a Thursday, Friday, but given what we had at that time, that was the, that was the model or the the timeframe that we went with. So school districts, as you know, yours as well, are going through this where they are also looking at, they have to minimize, they don't necessarily have wait lists, but people who want to switch from remote to hybrid or vice versa, in some instances, our instances aren't able to do so. So we are working through the list. Each one of our chief of schools, Sheila, Shirley, and Carmine are closely monitoring that. They are reached, they're reaching out to see if there are any, and they're, as soon as they are getting the information about parents who are making the choice to to come back out of hybrid into remote, then they're they're going through that. They're they're looking through it very, very carefully. But again, given what, when we did that survey back in December, the 32% at pre-K six and the 26% at 712 was what we had. But again, should we make some additional moves? We're going to get feedback that yet again, you're switching the plan up. Or, and/or you are, now my child is, goes from Ms. Malloy to Dr. Black. So we continue to look at this, but I I certainly understand the concern.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a couple more. I just am wondering, you're talking a lot about collaboration between teachers and all the resources that are out there, which I love collaborating. And I think that having those opportunities as teachers and looking at best practices from, you know, neighboring classrooms, et cetera, it's just so vital to our craft. And I'm just wondering. And I'm just wondering, in a week's time, when are teachers supposed to get all of this collaboration and planning done over the course of the next week for Phase Two? Maybe a lot of that has already started. But as they look at the simultaneous instruction and the demands on them, I, I worry that they don't have enough time for the planning. I mean, they have Wednesday for professional development. Do we have things in the evenings, after hours? Are there things that will be offered further professional development over February break, right? So, so that they could come in if they wanted to. What are we offering to make sure that that collaboration is taking place?
Yeah, so I can respond to that. So even as an upgrade, we added some, an afternoon, two afternoon math sessions for tomorrow that are after hours for teachers who want more deliberate support in math and are looking to add additional sessions through February and through the rest of the year, quite frankly, on how to improve instructional, instruction overall. Simultaneous instruction being just a delivery model. There are a lot of pedagogical knowledge and understandings that we have to build. And so our team is committed to helping to build that. I think to answer your question around collaboration and planning in the next week, we got a plan to open, plan to be ready. The nice thing is teachers are not engaging in new content. And so you might be engaging in new standards or new stories or new pieces of your math content or science content, but you're not getting brand-new kids and you're not getting brand-new curriculum. So some of the planning expectations that have been in place up to this point continue. And I used to think about if I have these four babies in front of me and I'm teaching an on-grade level story in shared reading, what do those four babies need from me in person? And what do my babies who are in remote instruction at home need? And how do I make that connection? So are we giving them in-person? Textbooks to turn pages? Are we pulling up the Google Docs and slides and reading shared reading? And then how do you do that? Will you plan that, how you've been planning that? Thinking about your babies and what each one of them needs, knowing that some of them might be in front of you and they might need something slightly different? Or you might need to position yourself in your classroom slightly different? Or your opening, your closing, your do-now might need to be slightly different in service of doing the good teaching you've already been doing? And you continue to plan and you continue to collaborate.
Okay, thank you. And this is second to last question, sorry. A lot of people have expressed concerns about increasing screen times for our remote students. 70% of our students are going to remain remote. And, and I think there's been talk that there could be an increase in screen time of up to one and a half hours per day. So what breaks have we built into the schedule to ensure that our students are getting those breaks? Kids are so, kids disengaged from remote learning there. You know, we had a student earlier this evening from East High School who got into U of R. Yay! Okay, that's awesome. Anyway, but was completely getting disengaged and distracted by YouTube videos, et cetera. You know, and that's a problem even for my own students. What are we doing to make sure that they're not getting further disengaged? Because my, my fear is that with the simultaneous instruction, teachers will now have less time to actually do that RTI that's needed for our most at-risk learners, kids who have not been engaging on a regular basis in the remote instruction. We've got to be able to reach those kids or we are not going to see graduations happen, right? So we've got to be able to reach those kids. What, what kind of breaks are we implementing?
So different than breaks, and I'll come back to that question in the backend. Because we're returning to our bell schedule, we're increasing the instructional diet to the pre-pandemic levels. And so where we had 45 minutes to 60 minutes of ELA in elementary school, we're increasing the instructional blocks back to their pre-pandemic, which means that there's 120 minutes, for instance, for literacy that's allocated on the schedule. Only 60 minutes of that needs to be synchronous simultaneous, which leaves an additional 60 minutes for teachers to plan high-quality instructional things for kids to do away from screen. So by default, and most of our instructional blocks of time returning to our block schedule, there are built-in times where teachers will have to continue to plan asynchronous learning experiences that do not require screen time. While also having some deliberate time to have direct instruction increased for all children in which they can have access to whole group, small group, independent activities. They're teacher-led, teacher-designed, and high-quality. So in terms of breaks, they're in there. But I will say that even though there's a screen break, there shouldn't be a learning break because we should be maximizing all instructional time. So that 60 minutes that's not simultaneous, which is asynchronous, should be built with having quality learning experiences for kids to maybe put away the computers and go screen time and write or draw or create or recite or experiment and do all the things that we know make a well-rounded learning experience that do not need a teacher in front of them deliberately.
Okay, thank you so much, Dr. Black.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioner Malloy. Commissioner LeBron?
Yeah, I won't have as many questions, but Kathlee, when you were talking, I was like, oh, I'm going to have to have you spend some time with Sophia. Because I wish that she could be a model student. But unfortunately, I know the challenges her teachers face every single year. And so I, you know, I'm very honest with her. She's a great child, but she is very challenging and will challenge every adult. But I'm also her mom, so that makes sense. So a couple of things, the 70%, I know Cynthia's laughing because she's always like apple tree, and it's true. I just want to talk very briefly about the 70% number that keeps coming up and just reiterate that the 70% number of parents who chose to remain remote is really accumulation of a couple of things. There were parents who intentionally also did not want to answer based on the information that we had at, at, at hand when the survey was open and who also emailed board members and the superintendent to say, given the options as how it's presented and lacking information, I'm going to just select remote because I don't really know what this means to go hybrid. And now as they're finding out what it means, many of them have reached out because they want to switch over to hybrid, but we had to move forward and create a budget and a plan. And in addition to that, there were a number of families that we were unable to get in touch with. And by default, those individuals also landed in that 70%. And I know that that number keeps coming up, but I just want to be very clear that I personally don't think it's a true accumulated number of parents who said, I'm keeping my kid home for safety reasons or that they didn't trust the plan. And hopefully in the future, we'll look at different ways to do those things and make sure we have better results that are clear and that parents have the information that they need to make the decisions. But I just want to clarify that because you guys know, I, I like the data to be as clean and, or as clear as possible. But it's being used right now to say that 70% don't think it's safe, and I don't think that that's a fair assessment to use that 70% given the information that I'm sharing right now that this board has discussed with the superintendent in December and the beginning of January, like, it's, it keeps coming up. So I am going to still ask for this video, even if it's a raw data, you know, raw material by next Tuesday to be presented. And there's a couple of reasons why I am making this request, Ms. Black. First and foremost, as leaders, I do believe that we should not be asking anybody to do something that we ourselves are not willing to do. Two, we have, I've never seen the model. And as a parent, I do want to know what this is going to look like. What is my daughter's fourth grade experience in a dual model? And trust me, I will be at schools too. I keep repeating this. I'm putting it on my calendar. But, and, and I will be at my daughter's school just to kind of observe a little bit too, because I'm very nervous and it's a big change in February. But I do think it's important that we demonstrate it for our families as well. So yes, for our staff, because we're asking them to do something that they may have never done or experienced. So we should demonstrate it and be able to stand on that, if this is the model that you are both pushing forward or this administration and, and the district. But two, I also want to be very clear that we tend to speak in jargon. And our families are not part of this jargon world of education. I wholeheartedly appreciate it that some of our parents that did come out tonight talked about our students are scholars. And I, I personally appreciate it that that's the expectation, that our kids are scholars, that they have black and brown excellence. And that, I, I love seeing that from parents. But I want us to be very clear to our families about what they can expect, what this means, and move away from the jargon's talk and try to make it as real for them as possible. And so I think the visual of a video as well would be helpful so that we're all on the same page. Because again, I, I know you presented the model, have discussed it, and that Dr. Mary Small is in your plan, but I just can't even picture it. So I, personally, I need to see a visual, not only as a board member, but as a mom, to understand what my own child will be experiencing in this district come February 8th. So I anticipate and hope, I know you said Thursday, I'll look for the link. I'm sure we'll get a link as the board. But I do think it's equally important for this entire community who tunes in every Tuesday to watch these meetings and every board business meeting to have that opportunity to view it as well. And so I look forward to that next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner LeBron. Commissioner Powell?
Yeah, so thank you. I have a question for the superintendent. When Commissioner LeBron said something about, you know, going to her daughter's school, a little alarmed, it went off my head. And not because she said it, as some people might think, but because it occurred to me, what if, what if every nervous parent decided to go to their child's classroom when we reopen, just to see that everything's okay? Would that present, would that present a problem in terms of, you know, managing the COVID environment and, and social distancing? What would you recommend? What is your advice to parents who might be watching about whether to, you know, drop the child, just drop their child off and leave or, or, you know, put their kid on a bus and, and trust? What is your advice to parents who are planning to go back, send their kids back to school?
We actually have outlined this. I think this is in our document that we have developed for parents. And we, we aren't allowing visitors unless we've called a meeting or we, we need to have parents in. We're really trying to make sure that we minimize the individuals who are coming out and that they're just the staff and the students in that particular school. Correct me if I'm wrong, chiefs or Melody, I thought we did. That's, I just, I want to make sure it's in the right one, the one for parents and caregivers. We outlined that, right?
Yeah, we have it on both. We have it, sorry, good evening, everybody. Good evening, Commissioners, and good evening, Vice President Elliott. Sorry, I'm in work mode. But yes, we have it on both documents. We actually have it on our reopening plan, guidance for visitors when they are coming for appointments or bringing students for testing, for example. And then on the welcome back, shorter version that we did for families, we have there too where we are letting families know that we are not, because of COVID right now, we are not going to be allowing like visitors to the classrooms, having lunch with the students. So we have that communicated on both plans.
Thank you. It's just, I think this is a demonstration of just how easy it is for mixed messages to get out into the community. It only takes one person to deviate from the prescribed plan and, and say something different for a whole bunch of, of confusion and chaos to ensue. Thank you.
Commissioner, Vice President Elliott.
Dr. Black, you had a question? You wanted to respond, I mean?
I just wanted to respond to Commissioner LeBron's push about jargon. And then to piggyback on Commissioner Powell's notion about visitation. So most of us know that the best way to figure out what our babies are doing in class is to ask them. And so whether your babies are coming in remote or they're in hybrid, when they come back to you, you need to ask, what did you learn today and show me? As a parent, a pseudo-parent of five children ages three through 12, who are all doing remote instruction, and two college students who did distance learning, the best way that I knew what was happening is to say, show me what you're doing. Show me your Google Classroom. Show me your Zoom link. Show me the text that you're reading. How do you know what you're supposed to be doing? What did you learn? So absent being able to walk into a classroom and say, let me see it, the best gauge on what's happening in classrooms that we have available to us right now are students to say, tell me what you're learning. And I'll tell you that most students, when they get consistently asked by the ones who love them or are taking care of them, are oftentimes eager to share the wonderful things that are happening in classrooms. So while we may not be able to visit, whether your babies are doing hybrid, remote, they're in-person, or at home, or in another place outside of the school building, ask them what they're learning. Ask them to show you the text. Ask them, is it grade level? Ask them what they learned today. And I guarantee that we get a good notion of what's happening in classrooms and good feedback on how to grow our practice and do things differently in service of our kids. So you can't visit them right now, but you darn sure can ask them to tell you what they're learning and ask them to show you.
Anything else, Commissioner LeBron? I see your hand is still up.
Yep, my hand is still up because I do want to respond back to a few things. So one, I do think that actually this board and legal need to readdress parents visiting. So, and I say that because this board went through a process when Melanie Funchess was the commissioner on this board, where we went through an extensive process around parents visiting in schools. And then we had this whole community forum on it, and then it was discovered that contractually, it's written under the school-based planning teams that they make up the rules for their school, and most of them require a 24-hour notice, which is something I personally don't agree with, although I understand why they have that rule in place. And so I would just like some legal clarity around that. I don't need an answer today. That's one. Two, I'm a parent that nobody's going to tell me I can't visit my kids, so we really will have to figure this out. Especially if I'm giving notice in advance that I'm coming and I'm going to come masked and do all the precautions of taking my temperature. And so I want to put that out there so that we can put this on a topic for conversation perhaps next week before February 8th, as we move forward. But third, I'm also a board member who's assigned schools to be a liaison for, and I've said this multiple times, we all are liaisons to a number of schools, and we should be visiting those schools. Whether it's COVID or not, we should be in those buildings. I know some of us have met with some of our principals or have relationships with them where we're meeting virtually. But it's not the same as being in school and visually seeing what's happening day to day. And so I will repeat it again, that I will be doing school visits come February 8th, and I will be taking time off my day job to accommodate that and do that both in February. And I plan to continue to go until the end of the school year, so I'll make those on a rotating basis. I will absolutely notify all of my principals because I do respect my, the leadership at the school so that they have a heads up that I'm coming. But I will also notify the superintendent and the administration so that they also know which days I'll be visiting schools. And I just happen to be very fortunate that this year I have School 15, which happens to be my daughter's school, as one of my liaison schools. So either way, I will be on site to see what's happening in the classrooms and do a walkthrough. Thank you.
Commissioner Malloy?
I'm back. Okay, sorry. I know. Hi, Dr. Black. Okay, so just a couple more questions. So I am wondering, let's see here. Right, is there any way that you could provide me, just as a teacher, with the breakdown of maybe direct teaching that's both synchronous and asynchronous by minutes in class, by grade, or by content? Do we have breakdowns that we've given, like, of expectations for, for our teachers? Because right now, it looks like the video that's being offered is, is a Phase One special education classroom. So what, what's the breakdown of direct teaching synchronous and asynchronous by minutes? By each grade level and content? Where can I find that?
So, uh-oh, I'm on black. Screen share? So there has been, I was going to share my screen, but there has been guidance given to teachers via our professional development and through our instructional, instructional diet guidelines from our pre-pandemic expectations. And then we, from our previous, so you have them already in your email, but we'll put them at the top of your documents, in your previous Phase Two and Phase Three outlines. You have the blue scale schedule that says 60 minutes direct instruction, 60 minutes, whatever. We have put them side by side so you can see that again, in a 120-minute literacy block, 60 minutes of that is direct instruction. In a 90 or 120-minute math block, 45 minutes to 60 minutes of that is direct instruction. And in the content session, the content directors have gone and spelled out, if you have a 60-minute math block, here's how much of that time should be spent on our do-now or direct instruction. Here's how much should be stationary rotations. Here are specific examples you can do to interact with smaller groups of students, which are either same ability or different ability. So we've been giving those strategies continuously and through after launch, through the office hours and opportunities to plan and be in classrooms to visit as instructional supports. We're more than willing through job-embedded professional development, provide updates, guidance, and strategize alongside. provide updates, guidance and strategize alongside teachers who want to, want our support or want to engage with us around how to plan differently.
Great. Well, I am excited just to see this in action and just understand how all that's going to work. I am visiting School 12 actually next week, just to watch some tech get rolled out. I was invited there. So I am excited to get into schools and, and see, you know, how these plans are developed, just like Commissioner LeBron was stating. But yeah, I really want to see those breakdowns for the instruction and, and how that's going to work. If we could, you know, get by grade level, just more specific information as commissioners, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioner Malloy. Dr. Myers Small, do you have anything else that you want to present?
I'll just summarize. I certainly want to thank both Chief Glenn Vanderwater and Chief Academic Officer Kathleen Black. This was incredibly informative. And I hope that it certainly continues to show that we are being thoughtful of the concerns of not only our staff, but maybe that parents or the community has about how we're moving forward in Phases 2 and 3. We continue, we are continuous improvement. And one of the things that I said on air yesterday, this is not a perfect situation. We recognize that. And Vice President Elliot, you said something similar to that. We continue to move forward and so recognizing that this is not a perfect process, we don't expect teachers to do this perfectly. And Kathy did mention this. We did, we do have teachers doing this right now in Phase 4, in Phase 1. No, there's no Phase 4. No, no, scratch that. There's only 3 in Phase 1. And they're doing it four days a week, right? So I, I think that, I mentioned this earlier, that as we move forward, we're going to have to have some flexibility. We'll have to have some patience. And, you know, I know that individuals are frustrated. We're working to get information together that addresses the questions. We'll continue to update information on the website. As I asked Glenn, we'll take the snippet of his presentation. We'll send that out. We'll put that on the website. We'll take Dr. Black's presentation, take the snippet of that, get that out, put it on the website. We're going to continue to develop resources so that our teachers can feel comfortable and that they feel like they have the supports that they need. And, you know, I certainly want to thank each one of the Commissioners for being supportive and, and, and just helping us move forward. So we thank you for your time tonight. And we certainly hope this was informative and that it answered some of the questions that even you have either individually or collectively.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. The next item on the agenda is the discussion of the fund balance policy 6500. And Commissioner LeBron, I'm going to turn the gavel over to you, so to speak, so that you can lead this discussion.
Thank you. So, Colleen, are you pulling it up to the screen?
Yes, I am. I know that, before I start, I know that Carleen had prepared a response to a question that was posed last week regarding a concrete example.
Yes, I was like, can we start with that first, actually? Because I do think it'll kind of tie into the conversation around the fund balance, but then also really tied back to this resolution that's before us tonight as well. They all kind of tie together, if that would be possible.
Okay. All right, Carleen, I'm just going to share the screen for you. Whenever you're ready.
I was on mute. I apologize. I know that Carrie Couples was joining us this evening as well. So if she could be led into the room, that would be great. So we did put together what we thought the board had asked with regard to our fund balance history and then more importantly, the comparison between the different levels of, of fund balance in accordance with the policies that we had submitted for consideration. We also had attached a couple of different drafts in addition to the, the previous draft. And I know that Commissioner Powell had presented a revised version as well. So again, this particular slide is just showing the breakdown between the different types of fund balance that we have and our historic usage. And if you could take it to the next slide, I would appreciate it. And again, I know that the board had specifically asked, show us the numbers. Show us the numbers and the difference between the different options that were presented. So in that peach type of color, orange, whatever you want to call it, in that particular scenario, that is the scenario where we're looking at the two months of operating expenditures. And so if you follow that through the course of history with the district of the last several years, you'll see the difference in the amount of fund balance that actually can be and would be put aside under that particular formula. Underneath the second line there or the bluish color, you're seeing the proposal that had been presented at the 4% of operating expenditures. And then the very last line is the, the 5% are actually the existing policy. So it, it's an effort to show you proposal or proposal, what the difference would be. It's our goal to reach a desired level of fund balance so that in years to come, when we have such challenges as we did this year with the pandemic, that we are able to sustain ourselves and, and that we can carry on operations. Those districts that had stronger fund balance had less of an impact than what we did as we faced these challenges. They had something to fall back on where we had absolutely nothing. We were totally completely depleted. I believe there's another slide attached here to, Colia. Thank you. So if you were to take the proposal number two that was presented to you with this packet, that would be an immediate impact to the district. And so if that proposal were to be utilized, where we are using the two months of operating expenditures, which is, again, it's aggressive, that would be quite, if you, if you flip back again, Colia, I apologize for going back and forth here, but you'll see the difference in that final column on the right-hand side. You can see the actual differences in the amount of fund balance that would actually be allocated in that particular year. In the proposal number three, which is felt to be a compromise when we listen to everyone and we try to bring all, all the considerations together, if you could flip back, Colia, to the final slide. In that particular proposal, what you read was a gradual phase in of, of the fund balance. So that's taking it over a period of time. We'll be making progress because it would be at the rate of 10 million per year. And it would take us a few years to get to that level. It would not be as aggressive as proposal number two, but it would put us certainly in alignment with where we needed to be as we move into the future. So I, I don't know if the board has any other questions this evening with regard to these proposals. I, like I said, I do know Commissioner Powell put forward another revision, but we'd be happy to take any questions.
I think I'm monitoring. So Commissioner Clark?
Yes. Well, my first question is, how realistic is proposal number two? Because it's so aggressive, it appears that that's something that we cannot, a goal we could not realistically meet.
Right. And so again, that's why we, we took a look at that and we said, you know, and from, again, from our perspective, we're trying to align ourselves with the GFOA requirements of two months of operating expenditures or two months of revenues, which again, revenues are so unknown at this point in time. We're, we're so unsure exactly what's happening with, with revenues as we move through these challenging times. That's why we would like to say, okay, let's step back a little bit and take a look at proposal number three with the gradual phase in, where it's over a period of time. We're, we're coming into compliance with GFOA. It would take us a little bit longer, obviously, to get there, but to your point exactly, it would be a realistic approach to take.
Mr. Clark, did that answer your question?
Yes, yes, it does. Because when I reviewed it, I thought of proposal number three was really the best way to go. It's more conservative and it's a fixed amount that we're setting aside each year to reach our goal.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Powell, I saw your hand up, but I see it down now. Did you still want to talk?
No, I was looking to speak next. Okay, so just to put these proposals in perspective, the administration's original proposal was 4% of annual operating expenses, which was a reduction from the existing policy, which puts a floor of 5% and a ceiling of 15%. If I'm reading it correctly, both the second and the third proposals replace the 4% with the GFOA recommendation of two months operating expenses. Now, you, Carleen used the word compliance and, and keeping him, what I want you all to keep in mind is, GFOA is a recommendation. We are already in compliance with GASB 54. So what we're, we're talking about here is which recommendation of GFOA we want to follow. The, the original GFOA of 2012 stipulated a range of 5% to 15%. And that's why what we have in our policy today is what it is. The, the conversation, last time we talked about this, revolved a lot around the GFOA, two months of operating expenses, only because nobody had a real sense of what, what that, the impact of that was. And you'll recall from our last conversation that, that I said, at the time I said, we're reviewing this now, therefore we're complying with the fiscal monitor's expectations. She came back and said, no, I, I do expect a modification to the policy. So from that night on, I tried to engage our fiscal monitor in a, in a very explicit conversation about, well, what did she think needed changing? What, what modifications did she think really existed? Now, Dr. Jallow, if you're on the call, I, I want you to fact-check me here. We, we finally did connect on Tuesday, Monday afternoon. And Dr. Jallow articulated to me that the dollar amount of the amount set aside in fund balance is not what she had, had an issue with. What she had an issue with was, in fact, the fact that we were rating that fund balance and doing so without a clear articulation of whether that was, whether we were violating our own policy or not. I felt I had an aha moment there. So I, you know, I used some active listening. I asked her if I understood her correctly. And then I went forth and I drafted the new paragraph that you see in the emails that I sent about specifically calling out, in, in the case of where our budget calls upon us to pull down funds from the fund balance in order to deliver a balanced budget. I suggested language that would simply articulate that we are either in compliance with the fund balance or, or are waiving the fund balance policy in, in the act of approving the budget. This really would bring great clarity to the whole issue. It basically says, everybody knows that we, either we're, either we're violating our, our own policy, which the board can always do. You know, we always have the prerogative to waive our own policies. Or, you know, drawing down the fund balance still keeps us within the policy requirements. So it, it, if I understood the fiscal monitor's expectations for this policy review, my understanding was that, that she was looking for clarity around that explicit point where we, in fact, were drawing down from our fund balance. We were told that that's what, in, in every single budget proposal that was presented to us, it was made very clear that that's what was needed to balance the budget. But what wasn't made clear was whether doing so would keep us within the compliance with our own policy or not. So that's why I offered the additional paragraph. Now, it seems that Carleen and I went off in quite different directions as a result of last week because she saw the conversation as a need for a larger set aside than what was provided in her initial policy proposal. I, I continue to think that the 5% to 15% range is acceptable because the GFOA language, that is, the, the recommendations continue to recommend that all institutions adapt those recommendations to their own specific needs and circumstances. And just as Carleen pointed out a week ago, other big, the other big five districts don't set aside that, they don't set aside 15%, at least not by virtue of their policies. So I continue to advocate for my own policy proposal with the addition of, of policy language around our budget adoption resolutions. And I'm open to any questions you have about that.
Carleen, did you want to respond? Or Dr. Jallow, did you want to respond?
Yeah, I'll wait for Carleen and then I'll respond.
Okay. Well, first of all, I, I thank all of you Commissioners for the time that we've spent on this one particular topic. And I also thank you for all of the questions that you have posed in the five months that I have now been on the job. I have really expanded my own knowledge base. I think that every day there's an opportunity to take a look at things in a, in a different, through a different lens. And in further discussion with our, with the OSC auditors that are onsite, with external auditors, with other colleagues, I, I think it's always, it's always prudent to say there's more that we can learn when we take a look at something through a different lens. So I will say that I know Carrie has had much time that she has spent into or taken much time on this matter. She has researched it thoroughly and I, I appreciate the work that's gone into it. And we do believe that draft number three is a very solid policy to bring forward. But again, it's not the administration that sets policy and we respect that. So we're just trying to bring to you what we think we know to be the best at the time from all the resources that we've tapped into. And we're appreciative for you entertaining our recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jallow.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to state that it's a both and position that I'd like to take as, in regards to the statements made by Commissioner Powell. I do agree that you should, as a board, not freely, for lack of a better term, raid your fund balance to a point where it's risky and leaves the district fiscally at risk because those amounts are so low that if you are at a, you know, you put yourself in a risky position if something comes up and you need funds and there's nothing there in your fund balance to help you out. On the other hand, I don't think this is in conflict. I also believe that whether you decide it's 4%, 5%, 15% that you want to put in your fund balance, that because of your fiscal situation, it should be option three where it is phased in. So I do believe it's a both and. Whatever amount you decide, I do believe it should be phased in. But on the other hand, I do like the language that was drafted by Commissioner Powell that alerts the board when they decide to dip into their fund balance as a, as a strategy for balancing your budget. So I hope I've made my... So I hope I've made my position, my lowly position, clear as it relates to this particular matter.
Yes, thank you. President White, I see your hands up.
Yes, thank you. Couple of questions and then a comment. And Leslie, whoever you deem to be the appropriate person to answer that question, that's fine with me. And, and I apologize, I just came in so I might have missed some of the answers to my questions. The first question is, what is 5% of our budget? Just a quick answer.
I'm sorry, President White, we had a presentation and I don't know if it would be helpful if you would like, Callie, to put it back up. There are some numbers with the different recommendations and what they mean in context.
That, that might be helpful, but it is, I, I did happen to see that just as I came in the room. But can someone just quickly tell me what 5% is?
Dan, if you just, if you're just looking for a back of the envelope, call it 30, $30 million.
30 million.
38, right.
I'm sorry? 38 million or 30 million?
38, 38.
$38 million, okay. So the next question is, proposal three, just for clarity's sake, does that mean 5% and $10 million a year for three to four years? Or is that just 5% until we get to, for three, three to five years? How, what's your thought about how that was to work?
It, it's a departure from the percentage methodology that we originally presented. It's, we actually had weighed all of these different options you're seeing now before we presented the first one. Then after the, the dialogue last week, I mean, I, I thought, well, let's present everything and let the board make a determination and then show the amounts as you had suggested in the last meeting. The, so option three is using the current recommendation of the GFOA language of two months' worth of operating expenditures. So, you know, not a real fancy calculation. You basically take your operating expenditures and divide by six. And that's the goal to, they, to shoot for. And so looking at the numbers on the chart, it seemed like, I kind of faded it to saying, okay, I want to lose 100 pounds, but I need to do it by March. Well, let's not set something unrealistic that, that's going to demotivate and deflate us. Let's make something realistic. So the phase-in approach seemed to be more reasonable, giving, so thus, option three.
So, so I just want to make sure I understand that. As I was reading it, that's five, the goal is 5%, which would be about $38 million and $10 million annually to build up that fund? Explain that to me, that's what I'm not.
Okay, so two months' worth of oper, can we go back, Callie, to that Excel graph?
Please and thank you, I think that'll clear it up.
Yes, thank you. Thanks. So if, if you look, let's take the, the most recent year, for example. Option three, the, the blue line. So if we had taken, sorry, no, I'm sorry. So if we had taken option three, which is actually the orange line, sorry, we would have needed, at the end of this year, if that had been in place, an extra $38 million in our fund balance to, to pass that parameter. And that would be a whole lot in one year, especially during COVID when we're not, there's so many variables and there's so much instability right now. Operations are not as per usual, which makes it even more complex when making these decisions. So it seemed like a reasonable target was to ramp up and try to achieve that level over three to four years. Now, the only thing I'll say is, the, the commonality in all the research we did, whether it be the OSC or, or whomever, the, everyone seemed to, to think that we currently don't have enough in there. Obviously, we didn't have enough last year, but that we should be somewhere, the OSC had said, somewhere around 100 million. Now, so, you know, we're trying to take all of these different factors and come up with what might be the most practical, reasonable approach without having to make, you know, more cuts to the district. If it's too drastic, then we're, you know, we're facing that scenario. So while this is 5%, when you crunch the number, it's really just, happens to be 5% more we would have needed. What it's meant to represent is, if we, two months' worth of operating expenditures would have been 108 million. We came in at, at, a fund balance needed. We came in at 69, 70-ish. We would have theoretically needed 38 more.
Callie, could you go back to the proposal listings? It had two and three, proposals number two and three? Okay, so what I'm looking at, it seems like there's some conversation on proposal number three. It says, "In the fiscal year, all things held equal, R C S D would phase in the fund balance increase at a rate of 10 million per year. Requirement is projected to be three to four years, at which time the goal is to maintain two months of operating expenses." So, so is, is, does that plan say, putting aside the issue of the 5%, does that, is that plan saying we're going to put aside 10 million for the next three to four years totaling 40 million dollars? Is that what that's saying?
That's the goal. I mean, it's the, the target. So when you, you know, that's what we keep in mind as we build our budget. We want to have revenues in excess of expenditures of 10 million for any given year over the next few years. And then gradually get to the goal and try to maintain it.
So the, the choice is between 10 million for the next three to four years to build up that fund balance? Or alternatively, doing 5%, which is 38 million? Is that how you look at it? And that would just be too onerous a year?
Well, doing it all, instead of, yeah, it would be a one-shot leap theoretically, all things being equal, which is really just very aggressive and not realistic, in my opinion.
Commissioner Powell.
To be honest, it could be any amount you're comfortable with. This is just something we threw out there as a suggestion. I mean, of course, it's up, you know, it's your comfort level as a board.
When you say any amount we could be comfortable with, you're talking about the 10 million? It could be another big.
Right, I mean, if you want to, if you want to say over, you know, X number of years, a rate of, I mean, a suggestion based on the numbers that we ran. I mean, ultimately, we, we believe that proposal three sets a goal. If nothing else, it keeps everyone, the fiscal responsibility aspect emblazoned on the brain as a district as a whole. And, and, you know.
I, I think I understand. Commissioner Powell, let me ask you this. If, if they're talking about a number of 10 million to build up that reserve to about 38, 40, 40 million dollars, and even indicating some level of flexibleness to meet our comfort level. And we were to add, as Dr. Jalloh seems to be supportive of, the, the, the policy language that says you cannot, it, it has to be 5%. We're working on it at, at this particular point, but it has to be 5%. And you cannot raid, for lack of a better phrase, your fund balance. Is, is there some deficiency in that approach?
Yes.
Commissioner Powell, and you just explained to me what it is?
Yeah, two, two issues, okay? I, I agree that 5% of all unrestricted funds is too low. I do agree with that. And part of the reason I agree with that is that we have substantial funds that are committed. Now, committed funds are part of the, of the unrestricted. The committed includes our post-employment benefits. It includes our, our several others, committed funds. It includes the, it should include the, the rate stabilization fund. That's one of the resolutions we tabled. So what I would suggest, the easiest way and the cleanest way, from a language perspective, to increase our required set aside is to change the language in the policy from unrestricted to unrestricted and uncommitted. Okay? There's already language that describes our existing policy that describes the gradual replacement, replenishment of the fund balance. If, if it is the will of the board to set aside more, then the, the, the best way I can envision doing that is wherever in the existing policy it says unrestricted, change it to, to say unrestricted and uncommitted. There's another reason, Dan, that I, that I want to caution against proposal three. Okay? On, on the bottom of the first page, I don't know if Callie wants to put it up, the draft, draft proposal. I can't see the title of it. But are you trying to? This was a poison pill. There's one that, that in there as well that says, "Any resolution for committed fund balance must occur prior to the last day of the fiscal year." Okay?
What are you trying to pull up right now, Commissioner Powell? I'm sorry, you broke up around that time.
The, the third proposal, track changes, first page, commitment of fund balance. Okay? So for those who are steeped in this, committed funds are funds that the board by resolution has set aside. And when we set aside, we set it aside from existing fund balances. And only the board can do it by resolution. So the idea that any resolution to commit a fund balance prior to the day, last day of the fiscal year, seems like it was put in there with the, and, and again, I don't mean to be paranoid, but it seems like it was put in there as a direct response to my proposal that funds that are currently set aside as assigned funds be recharacterized as committed funds. It's one, it's one, I'm not finished. I'm sorry, Carrie. It's, it's, it's one thing for the, our policy to constrain the administration between unassigned and assigned. But I don't under, I don't see any reason why the board needs to be constrained in writing a resolution to move funds from unassigned to committed. Okay?
Are you done, Commissioner Powell?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a couple of points that I want to make. And I don't know if you're done, President White, but I'm going to go and then I'll let you go because I'm listening to all of this. First and foremost, I support the proposal to go into this gradually for several reasons. One, we still have a deficit. Two, we don't know what the final impact of COVID is going to be on this budget. And also, my concern is that if we create this threshold that we have to save 40 million while we have a deficit, while we also borrowed last year that 10 million, we asked for permission from the city to allow us to use that capital 10 million out of the 119 million from the MOU, that we're going to end up putting administration in a position, and essentially this board, where we have to come up with 40 mil, almost 40 million dollars on top of a deficit when we're already trying to close a deficit. And what that means to me as a board member is additional cuts. So I, I want to try to minimize what, whatever scope and avenue that we can to minimize the cuts that are coming ahead in, in this budget season, which we know that they're coming and I don't want to talk about them like they're not going to happen. So I just want to be straightforward on that. The other piece, I think that the language is there because as I was doing some research for Resolution 578, which is on our agenda tonight, there are some tie-in pieces to the language. So first and foremost, we approved the CAFR back in, I think it was November. It was last year, towards the end of last year, we approved the CAFR. That CAFR had specific language about what is in our restricted, unassigned, committed, and so forth. This board approved it. The external auditors came and presented it. And so when we make those type of changes, after the CAFR has been presented and approved by this board, then it goes out to creditors for the mood rating and all of those things. And all of those things are really tied back to the city and their rating and our rating and their, our ability to borrow money. So when we make those changes on a document that we've already approved, that we've already said this board agreed to, based on what the external auditor presented us, and they presented this to these outside organizations that are giving us a rating, the first thing I thought about as I connected these things was that we are still under an SEC investigation around the 2018 budget, that we presented information on a budget that turned out that there was a deficit and wasn't accurate. And that's how we got a rating and that's how we had the ability to borrow, not borrow. I don't want to go into, down that rabbit hole and not understand unintentional consequences to things like this. And furthermore, I feel very strongly that we're paying a CFO and we're paying a superintendent to do this work and lead us down so that we don't get in trouble with those outside agencies on these conversations. And so for me, all of that ties back in together. Now, I do support that the board should have the, the highest level of authority decision-making. And if there are going to be major changes in any of our budget items and lines, where, again, this is why I propose a budget transfer policy for this board so that we have an overview and oversight when large sums are being moved from a budget that this board passed into another budget item line. And for me, that language in there kind of ties back into the budget transfer policy. So I'm okay with that language. Again, it goes back to, do we do this gradually and realistically? Yes, for me, I, I'm going to support that we do this gradually and realistically. And we can, in the policy, it says that we go into this and we give it a deadline, three to four years. Let's give it a deadline. Four years from now, we go back and revert to the GASB recommendations. That could be written in there. That could be done through a resolution that's passed, that we constantly monitor it every year and review where we are at financially. And who knows, with a new administration at the federal level, we might be in a different fiscal position next year to say, we don't need to be conservative in 10 million. Let's save 30 million because we have extra funding from the federal government to the states to, to, down to us. So I share all that to say, you know, at the will of the board. But I also want to point out that I looked at the agenda again and we are way over in time for this. And I, I just want to put that out there, too. Carrie, I see your hands up.
And I just wanted to address one thing. I had sent out an explanation, I, I don't know if you guys got it or not, about the 6/30 date and why it's referenced. And this is why I keep encouraging, like, perhaps you might want to get an independent like OSC or, or external auditors to consult with. So it is actually an audit issue. If funds aren't committed by 6/30, which is the financial reporting date, if the resolution is not passed by that date, and then we decide after the fact to pass the resolution in August, you know, we want to commit these funds for this amount. If we retroactively report it on our financials, we'll get dinged. Now, there's, and I, I'm not going to theorize about, I think it's just best to maybe, and that's okay. If you, if, if you don't want to use the 6/30 date, just know that there is a possibility or that we would get a, a comment in the audit and that's all. That's why the 6/30 is there. And I, and it's hard for an organization of our size, I mean, to say. "Okay, have a finite amount by 6:30 because our books close two months later." We don't get our actuarial report information in or Excel's health insurance information in until the August, September timeframe. And those are the reports that we use to determine those amounts. So it's a matter of, and I encourage you to please get guidance from the OSC. There is no hidden agenda here. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to do what, you know, I was asked to do, which is make a recommendation based on my experience. It is up to your discretion or decision. And I, you know, maybe you want to get some independent guidance and go from there if you're not comfortable with the recommendations or the.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. President White, I see your hands. Commissioner Clark and then Commissioner Powell.
Yeah, I guess my question, just for clarity's sake, and I appreciate Carrie and the administration's indulgence here. This is an important issue and it involves the board's rules fiduciary. And so Carrie, correct me if I'm wrong. You're proposing, just for clarity's sake, the administration's proposing $10 million a year for three to four years. And that's without regard to what the GFOA recommends, which at minimum would be 5%. Is that a correct characterization of what you're proposing? Or is there something else?
Two things. So there's one proposal. Our current policy says that we should have 5% to 15% of unrestricted funds. Unrestricted are comprised of three categories. Committed, assigned, and unassigned. So that's our current policy.
And that would mean $38 million for the committed, assigned, and unassigned? No?
No.
What would that, what would that 5% of the committed, assigned, and unassigned amount to?
So, Callie, I'm sorry, could you go back to that chart? Thanks.
In fact, bottom right most, the right most column, bottom corner. I think that'll really point right to what Van's asking.
This is the, okay.
So yeah, if you go to the green bar there, it shows you, let's go to 2020. This year, our current. Current policy says we should be between 5% and 15%. And if you look at the green bar, we felt, we came in at 11. So we're right on the mark this year. 5% of our, that balance would be 32 million, if you look under the green pass there. The top level would be 97 million, if you came in at 15. And we came in at 11 or 69.9 million. So that's the 5% to 15%, what's currently in place.
So 69 is 11%. That's what we actually put in, that's what we set aside the fund balance.
Yep, yep.
Okay. And the 32 million is 5%.
Right.
So again, and Commissioner Powell, when it comes to your turn, you can respond to this, but Carrie, this is to you now. Instead of putting up the 5% or the 11%, you're proposing a graduated restoration of the fund balance to the tune of $10 million a year. That's it. Correct me if that's wrong or right.
Correct, but not based on a percentage anymore.
Right.
The new, the most recent GFI guidance is not the 5 to 15. It's now they've replaced the language with two months' worth of operating expenditures. So it's a lump sum rather than a percentage. So if we went with that new guideline this year, we would have had to had 108 million. What we actually had was about 70 million. So we would have needed 38 million to reach, an additional 38 million in there to reach the guideline of two months' worth of operating expenditures. So hence, Option 3, we said, "Oh, that is really steep considering we have 70 in there." That is really aggressive, especially when we're in unpredictable times and on the heels of two years' worth of cuts. So we did a proposal to gradually phase it in, make some progress over the next few years.
So Carrie, so Carrie, let me ask you this. So right now, there is, and I know you'll correct me if I'm wrong, there's 69, 70 million in reserve, fund balance.
Unrestricted.
Unrestricted.
Fund balance, yep. So three out of, yep.
So we technically should have, I think you put the number of 108 million or something like that in that account. We should have that. And we're about 40 million short of that. What's that?
If we went with that option, that's what it would be. Just in black and white, it'd be 108 million.
So the goal of putting 10 million for the next four years is to get us to that 110, 108 million? Is that what you're saying? Because we already have 70 million in the bank, so to speak.
Correct, correct. Now, keep in mind, as future years evolve, or, you know, the numbers are going to change a little. But, you know, operating expenditures and the budget are going to, there's going to be some variance. But, you know, all things being equal holistically, that was the idea. And again, go ahead.
No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say that it, again, it's based on, that 108 million is based on two months of operating expense. So what Carrie's saying is that if our expenses continue to increase, then it's two months of those operating expenses each year. That's what would actually be the goal then of the fund balance level. So it's not going to say stay stagnant necessarily at 108 million. It would change. But what Carrie has proposed is that it's taking it in gradual steps to get us there versus placing the pressure saying that all of it needs to be realized in one year in order to be in compliance with the proposed policy.
I'm interested to see what Commissioner Powell has to say, Commissioner LeBron. But also, let me just add, and I don't need to spend a lot of time with it. I'm concerned that now that we all know we have 70 million in bank and I hear what Carleen is saying, that number of 108 million could go up or down depending on what, you know, our needs are as a district. I'm concerned, though, and that's why I appreciate hearing the flexibility in that 5% or whatever number we want to have added every month, that $10 million a year to set aside could have a, when we already have, in my mind, 70 million in the bank, could dramatically affect the services that we're able to offer children. If we already have 70, and I know it's not where we need to be, but we already have 70 million in the bank. And what we're trying to do is get to 108 million slash whatever that number might be. I'm concerned that, and I know there are people who look at this differently. I'm concerned you take $10 million out of our budget every year and that's going to have a devastating effect on our, as I've said frequently, we are already at the bone, we're sucking out marrow now. So I'm interested in hearing what Commissioner Powell has to say, but I'm good, Commissioner LeBron.
Okay. Commissioner Clark and then Commissioner Powell.
Yes, thank you. In reviewing the report, I noticed that the committed funds are also included in the unrestricted, which means we don't have $70,000. We've already committed a portion of those funds, you know, to be used for what the board has directed them to. So my question is, why don't we break out the committed funds from the unrestricted funds? And that way, we have a true picture of what we have in unrestricted. Because I was missing that point. I agree with Proposal 3, but we also need to know the amount of funds that we really do have at our disposal that are truly unrestricted.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. And I will uplift that, too. And Commissioner Powell?
Okay, so Commissioner Clark, what you just articulated is essentially what I just had proposed earlier, which is in the policy language, to replace unrestricted to unrestricted and uncommitted. And to Van's point, a couple of things. Van, would you stipulate that the difference between 16 and a fraction percent and 15 is negligible?
Yep.
Okay. So if you, Callie, can you blow up this chart?
Personally, I can't. It's a PowerPoint. Hesitation mode, I'm not.
Sorry to know that. The upper limit of 93 and a half million is pretty nearly what Carleen said was recommended, which is 100 million. Okay? Our current policy, not my proposal, not Proposals 1, 2, or 3 from the administration, but the existing policy gives a range of 1 to 15%. And then it says, "If a balance drops below 5%, it shall be recovered at a rate of 1% per year until the 5% is reached." The 1% a year from where we are right now, if you, to get from where we are to the 15%, would be about 7 and a half million over five years. I think that's very much in the range. It's better than 10 million. It's better than all at once, but it moves us towards the ceiling. Finally, the thing about, the thing about the ceiling is in our existing policy, we say, let me find it. "Should an unassigned fund balance ever exceed the maximum of 15%, the district will consider fund balance surpluses for one-time expenditures." Right now, those considerations, if you will, are currently being earmarked as assigned. There's, what was it, a $5 or a $7 million set aside? By rights, we shouldn't be setting anything aside until we reach this 15% threshold according to the existing policy. But the existing policy is not inconsistent with these goals. And I would, I would view it as a friendly amendment if we wanted to change the application of the 1% to 15% to unrestricted and uncommitted. Oh, one last point before I still have the mic. The thing about our CAFR, to respond to Commissioner LeBron's point, CAFR is essentially a discussion about our year-end finances. It's our balance sheet. And so any action the board might take, I agree with Carrie that we wouldn't want to take action for one fiscal year that would affect a different fiscal year. So the language of any resolution to commit funds would have to be crafted with a recognition of when year-end is. However, the concept of limiting the commitment of funds just doesn't belong in the policy because only the board can commit funds. It's one thing for the board to give guidance to the administration on what can be assigned versus unassigned, but since only the board can commit funds, that language is just not appropriate. And that language is in Proposal 3. And so I continue to advocate for my policy draft rather than any of the three district administration drafts.
So I just want to just reiterate to the board. I don't want to debate this all night long. I'm going to go ahead and support the administration and their recommendation and trust their expertise in this. In addition, you know, this is not the same administration that was, they walked into the deficit. So they did not create the deficit. It was none of their leadership or their decision makings. But certainly, it was some of my board colleagues, and we got to be honest about that. So I am not going to trust the individual personally who was chairing finance and did not see a deficit to make recommendations over a new leadership, new administration, that I do believe in their knowledge and skill sets. So with that said, I don't know how we resolve this and how we move forward, but I personally do not want to continue having the debate. And so I don't know, there needs to be a motion to vote on this or a motion to re-table, but I'm done having the debate and the discussion. And I do trust the administration and our CFO and will support the recommendations that they put forward.
Madam Chair, I move that my draft version 2 be brought to a vote for consideration.
Are we talking about Resolution 578 and 579?
We're talking about the policy itself.
She's talking about the policy. So I don't know if someone, if somebody has to bring it to the floor. I'm not going to second, I'll be knowing it, so.
I just moved it, I'm just waiting for a second.
There's a second.
Yeah.
All in favor?
No.
Nays?
Nay.
I'll do nay as well. So it, did it pass 5-2? Okay.
Correct.
So I just want to clarify, we have four board members that voted to support the board member that chaired finance throughout a deficit and overriding the decision of administration and their expertise in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, who was chairing this? Who's the chair?
I was actually cheering at this, up until this point. So for Van to call, it was on me. So I will turn over the gavel to Van.
Madam Vice President, is that your pleasure? Because I don't mind continuing to listen in. You were chairing the committee. I asked you to do that. You're doing a fine job. It's up to you. I can be, continue to be a participant or I can chair. Whatever works for you, Madam Vice President.
Oh, I'd rather turn it back to Vice.
No, 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 I said Madam Vice President, who was chairing the committee. I'm sorry, Commissioner LeBron.
No, no, I know, I'm saying, I was cheering it. So I'm going to turn the gavel actually back over to Vice President Elliott.
And I'm asking her, what's her pleasure?
Yeah, I'll continue.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I have one question. I just, I didn't see Commissioner Adams on for the vote. So I recorded for to vote with Commissioner Adams absent, if that's the will of the board.
Commissioner Adams? The vote?
You're muted, sir.
I still don't see him.
He's on.
There you are.
Yeah. I'm going to vote aye.
Okay, thank you. So Commissioner, so that is 5-2, correct? All right. Commissioner Powell, you've got your hand up?
I think it's for when we get into the commitment resolutions.
Okay. So that's 578 and 579, correct?
Correct.
All right. So can I get a motion for approval for these, for 578 and 579? Is it okay to take them together or would you like to have those separated out?
We have to pull them from the table.
I move that we lift the two resolutions from the table.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chairperson, I now move for the advancement and approval of Resolutions 578 and 579, or at least for discussion.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor? Well, I guess what I was thinking is, is just to bring it back. But discussion?
Yes, I have some points to make on number 578. This again goes back to my conversation about the CAFR that this board already passed with these numbers in there. Um, this again goes back to my conversation about the CAFER that this board already passed with these numbers in there. Um, if you look at the dates, now we're talking about assigning fund balance to insurance for, there's some dates from twenty seventeen, eighteen, but the twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty budget year has already been, um, discussed through the CAFER. And again, this goes back to that SEC investigation that is still occurring. I just want to put it out there that we cannot give false information to, um, the Moody folks and also those who are lending us money. And so I am not supporting this resolution. And furthermore, I do think that if this was written in a language that says, this is what we're going to do in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget year, that it is something I would consider supporting. But as it is written, I can't support, and I will not be a part of giving false information to the SEC about our budget and how we're budgeting certain, um, line items.
Thank you, Commissioner LeBron. Any other comment, questions? All in favor of, uh, Resolutions?
Uh, I do have a rebuttal. On five seventy-eight, that, that resolution does not identify a specific fiscal year. That resolution calls upon us simply to move the rate stabilization fund from its current assigned fund balance status to a committed fund balance status. And if we do that before the end of the fiscal year, we will be well situated for the next CAFER. It has no impact whatsoever on the CAFER that is already completed.
Any other comments?
Um, yes, I just want to point out to the board that it literally states "assigned fund balance health insurance" and has the date June thirtieth, twenty seventeen through June thirtieth, twenty eighteen, June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty. And again, I will support it for the twenty-one, twenty-two budget year, but I'm not going back. And if there was, you want to make an amendment to clarify it so that anybody who picks it up can read it, including those in the SEC, I would support it in that regard for the next budget year, but I'm not supporting it as it's written.
Commissioner Powell? Let me rebut once more. The, the dates that Commissioner LeBron is referring to are in the whereas clause, and they only capture the historical data. It, it showed, and, and the, and the data that you see actually came from the CAFERS from the last four years. It does not suggest, nor imply, nor intend to alter data from previous years. It, it, it's a, a resolution to redefine the rate stabilization fund from an assigned fund balance to a committed fund balance. Now, from historically speaking, the, the GASP fifty-four came into effect in two thousand and twelve. The agreement to do self-funded insurance did not come up until two thousand and thirteen. So my thesis, my, my theory is that what, after we did, after we made a decision what funds needed to be committed in two thousand and twelve with the guidance of our Budget Director Vern Connors, we set aside specific funds, and the rate stabilization fund didn't exist yet. The rate stabilization fund is functionally exactly the same as one of the other funds that we commit to, the, the Workers' Compensation Fund, because we're self-insured for working, workers' compensation. The concept here is simply to treat the, um, rate stabilization fund the same way that we would treat our Workers' Compensation Fund. And I believe that after we created the committed funds, um, in two thousand and twelve with Vern Connors' guidance, that we simply didn't look back, and nobody gave it a thought as to whether the rate stabilization fund ought to be treated one way or another.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell. Um, can I, um, all in favor of Resolutions five seventy-eight and five seventy-nine?
Madam, Madam Chairperson?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, um, I had a question, and I appreciate Commissioner Powell's, uh, clarification. But I don't want, in the event that's, no one looks at the record, in the event that's no one bothers to look at the record and what she said, my question to the administration, given Commissioner LeBron's articulate concerns and the prospect, at least according to her interpretation, people might look at this as something inappropriate. Is there any language, given what Commissioner Powell said, and assuming that it is accurate, is there any language that could provide the clarity so that if people just looked at the resolution, they would know this was all above board? Because what Commissioner LeBron has suggested, and I apologize, Mr. LeBron, if I have incorrectly interpreted you, that there's something wrong about what we're doing. And I, I just want the record to be clear, if in fact what we're doing is right, and I assume that it is, I just want, is there any clarifying language that could be brought to the resolution? And I'm asking the administration this, uh, so that, that, so there is no question about whether the board has acted appropriately, i- if someone looks back in history and looks at this. The language looks fine to me, but, you know, I, 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 Commissioner LeBron, uh, is an intelligent person, and she reads it a different way. And so I put it on the administration to provide, to respond to her concerns and not just say, okay, well, the board's going to vote on it and, uh, let it just happen. It, you've heard Commissioner LeBron's concerns. Are they legitimate? And if they are, is there a way to correct the language so that people don't look back in history and think that this board did something inappropriate or legal? Uh, Superintendent Myers?
You're, you're gonna, you're putting me on the spot. I, I would need to do a little bit of work with Carleen and Dr. Jallow and want to get back to you, with all due respect.
Uh, and I appreciate that. Is there a time constraint that, that requires that, um, I know we passed the, the, the resolution related to fund bounds, but is there a time constraint that would require that you provide a, uh, resp, uh, that we act on these five seventy, five seventy-nine tonight?
No, there's not.
I don't think so.
There's no reason we could stay long.
So, so I, I, and I don't want to cut off the debate, Madam Chairperson, but.
President White, I'm sorry, before you cut off the debate, because I know you're going to, and I'm, I will support that.
Commissioner LeBron, before you say that, Callia's raising her hand. Let me just see what Callia has to say.
Yes, I just want to, um, ask, Steve, can we table for a third time? I know in the past, w- we've been told by, um, legal counsel that once the resolutions are tabled twice, after that, the resolution fails and has to come back in another, another number. The, the, that's what, that's what we've acted on in the past, is that the resolution is dropped, and then we, it would need to be brought back under, under a new resolution. Because at this point, we've re, re-tabled it from the, uh, December seventeenth business meeting, and then again at the January nineteenth special meeting.
Okay, but.
There may be, there may be very subtle nuance in Roberts that says that, but we're also, we can operate under the small bor, board rules. I mean, this, quite frankly, the way we table isn't even part of the, the original Roberts rules. So I would say that if this body wants to choose to table for a third time, I'm not going to say that it's improper.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Yeah, Commissioner?
It, it's okay. I just want to remind the board where the resolution came from. It came from Commissioner Powell. The administration did not put this resolution up before this board. So I, I know that, Van, you're asking Lesni or her team if it's going to have an impact on anything. Um, time-wise, I appreciate you asking them, but they didn't give us this resolution. This is being driven by another commissioner.
So, 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 so aren't any, um, uh, time constraints, as I heard Dr. Myers Small say? Uh, and I want to be respectful of others, that's why I mentioned I was about to make a motion to table, because as you all know, it goes directly to a vote. Um, it seems like everybody, I haven't heard anybody oppose that. We can straighten this thing out. Maybe Commissioner, maybe the, the resolution isn't necessary. Maybe, uh, there, there is some adapting language that could bring some clarity to it. So I'm making the motion to table for a date certain. Madam Clerk, could you give me a date that I can put in my motion?
I'm sorry.
Can, can I, let me offer an alternative also.
Sure.
You could make a motion to, you could make a motion to commit it to the appropriate committee, which I think would be finance. And that would, that would do, that would, in essence, take care of the same thing, but it's not the same as a tabling motion. So you could make a motion to commit it to the next Finance Committee meeting, which is in a couple of weeks.
I'll support that. I'll second it if you make that motion, President White.
Uh, that's, that's my motion then. I just need a second.
And the next finance meeting in January.
Oh, do we need to?
I mean, February. I'm sorry. The next one is in February. We're at the end of January.
Yeah.
Need a vote?
Do I need a vote? Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, uh.
Madam Chair, before we, before we go too far off of the conversation about committed funds, uh, Callia, could you pull up that resolution?
And let me just, let me just also.
We voted. It's off the floor. We have to move on.
Let me just say that we do not allow, we, we, we are far off of the timetables of our agenda. So we, we, we need to either not have any times, um, but we need to be, we need to be reminded of the times that we've associated with the agenda items. So I, I, I like for us to be mindful of that. Is that something that you need to ask right now, Commissioner Powell?
We can call it new business.
Yep, okay. Um, let me go to, uh, Commissioner Adams, turn the gavel over to him for the CIGR. And if we could catch up on, on time, that would be great, Commissioner Adams. And I'm saying that to myself when I get to HR. Commissioner Adams?
Yeah, um, so, let me see, my scheduled time, starting was supposed to be six-thirty. So, that's what I'm working with. So welcome to the CIGR, um, committee. The purpose of the, uh, the, the CIGR, which is the Community Intergovernmental Relations Committee, is twofold. To increase public awareness of the Board of Education and the ways in which board oversight and decision-making improve student performance and achievement in the district. And two, to facilitate the board's working relationship with stakeholders to advance district interests. Stakeholders include students, parents, grandparents, guardians, R C S D staff, and members of the community, and elected officials at all levels. With an equity and advocacy perspective, CIGR seeks to increase equity for all students in conjunction with the Superintendent Policy and Finance Committees in accordance with twenty twenty, twenty-one board goals. So first thing I'm going to talk about is, um, the State Monitor's Action Plan on Racial Bias P D. Under the State Monitor Academic Plan, Table Five, Recommendation Four, the Board of Education should incorporate racial bias training into the onboarding process for new commissioners, in the P D plan for all commissioners by January thirty-first. In order to facilitate this action item, I would like to have a brainstorming, um, focus going on right now, um, in, in regards to that, to the racial bias training. So, um, let's hear it, commissioners.
Commissioner Adams, um, can I speak for a moment?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, so what commissioners and everyone is seeing on the screen now, in conjunction with the Governance Committee, um, and CIGR preview meeting team, we, um, met to discuss some of the components that commissioners may want to see within that racial bias P D. And so that's what you're seeing on the screen, and Commissioner Adams is asking for input to, um, figure out what other components you would like to have included. And then board staff will take that information and find appropriate facilitators to, um, host the P D. And I'd like to take a moment and go back for one moment and, um, welcome our parent rep, Jessica Gustafson, who's with us this evening as well. Thank you, Commissioner Adams.
Yeah, and, and just to be clear, if you have any, uh, specific facilitate, facilitator, uh, suggestions, please email that directly to Callia.
Dr. Jallow has her hand raised.
Okay, Dr. Jallow.
Okay, so, um, good evening again. I, I appreciate this, um, template and outline. And while I think it is, is fine, um, one of the things that I think would be very crucial for the organization and the board members in particular is training around how to identify and unpack institutional racism. Um, I think there's one level where you're talking about, uh, a personal, um, perspective on how you view yourself and how you handle yourself in your organization. But I'm really also interested in institutional racism, how it impacts your students, how you might be contributing to it, how you can dismantle it. And I think that that type of training is just as important as what you have on this document as well, because I think that's what's impacting your children of color and their performance in this district.
Yeah, I, I would have to agree with that wholeheartedly. Um, there's a lot of, um, people just don't even realize the racist stuff that they do. I mean, uh, they're talking, they be talking real loud in this district, and it'd be real racist. They don't even, I say, I can't believe they said that. It's, it's so much, I, I mean, even as today. Today, I was, I was, found out by the email, got the all button, replied, all got hit. And people, we just, people be coming out their mouth with some really, really racist stuff. It means the people that are in power.
I would also like to offer another example. When you look at your high school graduation data, for instance, why is it that black boys have a lower rate of graduating than many of their counterparts? There are some things that the institution is doing or not doing contributes to that kind of data point. So I also want us to look at things, it's not just what people are saying or not saying, or how they're treating each other, but there are things that are established within this organizational structure that somehow contribute to the outcomes of different groups of students. And I think that as a board, that's something that needs to be examined and that, um, can start through our professional development training, um, that could be offered.
So can I ask a question? I don't, I don't know if people have, if you've got hands up, Commissioner Adams?
I don't see any.
Okay, so thi- this training for board members would help, would inform us in terms of how we, um, develop policy?
I think how you develop policy, how you view your data, um, how you make hiring decisions, what structures do you have around that? What structures do you have around making decisions which schools get what? What structures do you have around which children get access to what? You know, just examining some of the practices and protocols and structures that you have within the organization that contribute to certain groups of students and/or parents feeling or being marginalized.
I, I would also, um, want to add something a while around, and maybe it's embedded in here, but something around, uh, white privilege. Um, and, and it being racism being so inherited in people that they don't even understand that it's racism. I don't know where that would go, but, you know, somehow we've got to talk about, um, and bring it to the forefront about white privilege. You know, we saw a lot of that tonight, uh, unfortunately. Then they may not even believe it's white privilege, but, um, you know, we, I think that's something we need to include in this, um, P D.
Well, then we'd have to include, um, white fragility as well.
Yeah.
Well, I did have my hand up, Commissioner Adams.
Okay, my bad. Um, I'll go with you first. I don't know if yours was up before Beatrice, but I'll go with you first.
Okay, I just wanted to indicate that I, uh, reviewed the program and that you laid out. I think it's very comprehensive. I think it's definitely something that we need to do. But I also wanted to talk about, um, diversity and inclusion. And then maybe I'm too early in the report, but when we. but when we, when we indicated that we were going to review all of our policies, we stated that we need to look at it with an anti-racist, uh, attitude. So, one of the things that I did find liking, even though I think the report is very good, the fact that we're not advocating for the state regarding their seniority, uh, policies, because whenever we have layoffs, you know, people of color, protected classes are the ones that are usually impacted the most. And we probably need to go to the state to advocate that if, if there are going to be major layoffs, and I guess we could define that, that, uh, the reduction in staff have to reflect the percentage of that protected class in the total general population. If we're laying off a hundred people and say twenty percent are protected class, then no more than twenty people in that class can be laid off. Instead of going with the, uh, LIFO model right now where you last in, first out, because no matter how great a job our superintendent does, whenever there's a financial crisis, the diversity is walking right out the door with the layoffs. So we really need to, and almost as Vice President Elliott, when she talked about the put, uh, the School of Prison Pipeline, it seems to be something that we need to be advocating across the state so that we can protect diversity and inclusion across the state. Because, I mean, we're fighting so hard to attain it, and then to lose it with layoffs, we're starting all over again.
So, before I pass it to, to Beatrice, I need to tell you that we've been having that conversation ever since they, the layoffs happened last year at this time. Because it was a whole lot of, not just good teachers of color, good young teachers. Um, of course, the Board who connected with the students, they had to, they had to leave. And the HR guy, Harry, I forget his last name, you know, he had did, put a lot of work in trying to bring some diversity into the district. But soon as the layoffs came, those were the people, immediately, I'm talking about some amazing teacher. Um, they were immediately, um, let go because they were the last in. And so they would, had to be the first out. I agree wholeheartedly. We have to, that's why I say, um, we have to march on, um, Albany, man, because that's what it's going to take. Um, the, the, the unions are going to fight ridiculously against this. They're so, and they're real powerful in Albany, but I'm telling you, ain't no more, ain't nobody more powerful than the people, man. If the people come together and we go to Albany, I'm telling you, man, we can, we can do this. Beatrice, on you.
I'll be on the bus with you.
Yeah, so I'm glad you mentioned, Mr. Adams, that this is a, a point of topic of conversation because, as I mentioned before, there are states where black and brown individuals who are part of a collective bargaining unit, which are an underrepresented representation, become a protected class and cannot, you know, you can't cut from that group, um, based on the ratio. And that is something that we can address with the state. I don't know we'll win over seniority because, um, I think that extends across multiple states. That's not just a New York State thing. But certainly I do think in New York State, we can advocate to have black and brown teachers, um, be a protected class within our district and the Big Fives. And I think we should also, um, start having that conversation with the other Big Fives, who also tend to be in the same situation that we're in. Um, because that would then give us a little bit more oomph, right? If we are all going as a Big Five collectively, and perhaps there are other districts out there that also want to be a part of that conversation and are also struggling with maintaining that diversity in their school districts across the state of New York. Um, but what I want to add to this piece here in front of us is, um, a couple of things. One, I, I definitely feel as a Board member, we have to address our own racist, um, issues that have come before this Board multiple times. We ourselves don't have our stuff together, so I know that we're working on it. And we've, Ms. Adams and I were grouped together, um, for some of the Board retreat pre-work. Um, but we as a Board are not there, and, um, I, I think that would be helpful if we were a little bit further along in that conversation. The other thing I want to add is that, you know, I do attend a fellowship to learn how to write anti-racist policies, and it's a full year. And, you know, when we have these conversations, they can't be had in ten minutes, and they can't be had in, uh, you know, as we're rushing through them. Um, and so I would be okay with supporting this being a full day of professional development for the Board to even start having the conversations. Because I, I certainly don't think that this is, um, we're going to even touch or scratch even a little miskul scratch, uh, on the surface to the issues and this institutional racism that exists in this district. But I would be more than willing to dedicate whatever time, um, if we come up with an all-day Saturday and a, a half a day Sunday, two Sundays in a row, whatever the case may be, I just want to put it out there that I will commit whatever time is necessary to, in, address this more in-depth as a Board, and then have a collective understanding of how we're going to use a tool to evaluate, uh, our policies and a lens for anti-racism against our policies and further our practices within the district. Um, but that's something I think we need to spend a lot of time having conversations on, coming together collectively as a Board to even define what anti-racist means, right? We, I think we all have different meanings on that. I, I think we all actually have different meanings on racism, although I use the textbook definition. And I am not a power of the, uh, racial makeup that holds the collective power. Let me put that out there, so. But I've had other people on this Board, right, try to call me a racist. And I just want to put it out there that I use that textbook definition, so. Um, I, I don't know what your thoughts are, Mr. Adams, and since you brought it up as the CIGR Chair, which I think it is appropriate for you to lead this work, um, because this is going to be impactful to our entire community and how we interact with the government as well. So, I would be willing to do that, that's all.
Okay, so next up, I gotta go to, um, to my parent rep, Jessica.
Um, good evening Commissioners. Um, I just wanted to share a little bit about, um, a parent perspective on this issue of race, racial bias. Um, it comes up over and over and over again in conversations and in meetings that are, um, geared towards district advocacy or parent group meetings. Um, parents are, it is not uncommon to hear parents talk about feeling profiled and feeling that bias. Um, many parents have expressed needing to go into school professionally to speak a certain way so that their teacher can see them and will then treat their students more equitably. Um, white parents have expressed feeling preferential treatment, um, wanting their counter, black and brown counterparts to be treated the same way, um, even if they don't have time to come into school and participate and volunteer in various things. Um, and parents and guardians have expressed things that have been shared in classrooms that are racially insensitive. So this, I just wanted to impress upon the Board, um, the importance of this issue. It comes up all the time. Um, I'm really excited and really encouraged that it's going to be addressed. And I agree, um, with Commissioner LeBron, it can't kind of just be this sideline thing. It has to be a part of a robust, um, plan and, um, procedure that is really looking at tackling this, um, racial bias that's happening throughout our district. We are all aware of the, um, racial despair, I mean, the disproportionate, um, ethnicities we have among our teachers and our students. The, the best, most recent, um, statistic I could found is that we, from two thousand fourteen, we have eighteen percent black and Latino teachers with eighty-seven percent black and Latino students. And so if this is our demographic, we, it is, um, our response, your, it's the Board's responsibility to, um, make sure that we are doing a better job with this for our students and our families. Um, I think it's imperative to the success of our district, and I know that there will be, um, pushback. Um, but I do urge the Board and the Superintendent to really, uh, make this a priority. Um, and as we move, I'm excited to work with CIGR to move this forward and prepare, um, and, and look for vendors. Um, but I just wanted to share that parent perspective, that this is, um, it has, it's a, it's a, you know, very important issue.
Yes, it is. Um, ne- next, I'm not sure. My thing doesn't tell me who hand was up first between, um, President White and, and Vice President Elliott.
Commissioner Adams was Vice President Elliott, then, um, President White, and then Dr. Myers.
Okay, so my, mine doesn't tell me that. So, Vice President Elliott.
Uh, just, just a couple of things to lend to the conversation. You know, everybody should want to have this kind of effort towards, um, racial equity. The fact of the matter is, is the next generation, um, the next generation is going to be quite different. It will be the majority, it will be black and browns in this nation who will be the majority, and whites will be the minority. And so it is in everybody's best interest to make sure that we have these kinds of, um, uh, protocols and these kinds of processes in place because, you know, twenty fifty, you know, this is going to flip, where the minority will be, um, um, of white people. And then, um, just an example of a situation that expresses this, uh, I happen to be getting my car, um, serviced, and one of the, um, uh, car pe- car repair people indicated to me that, uh, he wanted his child to go to School Twenty-Five because of a particular program at School Twenty-Five. And the placement person, because he was a white male, they were white, um, had them to go over to School Forty-Six and said that that school would be most, more appropriate for them. So, you know, this, this thing is very deep within, um, our school district, in placement. Um, you know, there's racial bias and just, just all over. And, and, um, and it's endemic as in people's head, you know, the way in which they think that there's a certain group that think that they are superior over another group who think that they are, they're inferior. You know, the way, in, in many cases, the way in which they come and present themselves to the Board. You know, so, um, we got a lot of work to do, and I'm willing to participate in that work. Thank you.
Okay, um, President White?
Yeah, sorry about that. Um, so, um, first of all, I want to thank you, Commissioner Adams. This is important work, and, um, unfortunately, all of this stuff has been going on for decades, centuries. We're just getting around to doing it here in the district. I would let folks know, I'm sorry, I just ran up the stairs, uh, that, uh, we, we have been doing some of this work already. And I, folks may not know that the Board has retained Dr. Malik Mohammed, who was working under the guise of restorative practices, but the subject of race has come up. And that is an area that he has extensive experience in. Boy, I'm out of shape. So, so the Board has begun this work, and the, the, the fact that the subject of race has come up, has come up in a number of our, our, our restorative sessions under Dr. Malik Mohammed and otherwise. The other thing I want to add, because I know it's late, um, and I know you all know this, so I don't have to spend a lot of time doing this. In my professional capacity as a civil rights lawyer, let me tell you something. We could do all that we want to do. I don't mean to be a negative Nancy here, but we could do all that we could do. And it might have very little impact because a lot of what's going on in our schools does relate to race and racism. I get it. But there's a whole, and you all know this, I'm not saying that y'all don't already know. There's a whole big world out there that is racist as they can be, and the teachers and the students are all impacted. I, I, I can just, I won't go into any detail. I was before the Appell Division Fourth Department with this boy, he was sixteen years old at the time, literally picked up by the police, slammed down to the ground, jaw broken in six places, wired shut for six months. Boy, no record whatsoever. The kinds of questions that I was peppered with by the Appell Division Fourth Department told me that they didn't understand their own biases. So, so, uh, there's no doubt in anybody's mind that we have discrimination in the district. Our district wouldn't be made up of human beings if it weren't discriminatory. But there's, and you all know this, y'all work in this profession. I'm just telling you, as a lawyer, it is so pervasive out there that the children and families that we deal with either come into the district racist or having felt the impact of racism. And, and that has to be part of our training too, the understanding that try as we may, there's such a big world out there that is so, and it's beyond Trump. It's been, this is part of America's fabric, that the reality is, it, it will be very challenging and difficult. Even if we were to come to some level of understanding on our own as a Board, or even if a principal in a building was able to figure it out with some of his or her colleagues, it is such a pervasive historical part. It's the reason why I am employed as a lawyer, by and large. I don't make money off of my criminal defense work, which sometimes, I make money, to the extent I do, off of discrimination. And it's so perv- and you all know this, it's so pervasive and so why, that I, I'm, I'm committed to what you proposed, Commissioner Adams, but the reality is, that's the tip of the iceberg, tip of the iceberg.
Thank you. Um, Dr. Myers?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Adams. I just wanted to circle back to work that's going on in the district. And we actually had a meeting last night. I'm not sure if our district knows, um, that by resolution, we, the Board created, um, what was called the Real Team, which is the Racial Equity Advocacy Leadership Team. We actually had a, a meeting. This is our third or fourth one for this school year. Um, and they, the team is comprised of both school district and community members and our community partners. Last night, we had pretty in-depth conversations, and part of what we are moving forward with, we have benchmarks, um, that include, um, anti-racist professional development. So I certainly think that it is critically important that the Board certainly lead that, being the governing body in our district. We also, um, have a benchmark of, um, ensuring that members of each union are able to avail themselves of professional development that deals with equity, anti-racism, inclusion, et cetera. Additionally, we, um, have a benchmark of, um, looking at, uh, and creating a comprehensive listing of those who we partner and contract with to make sure that they understand anti-racism, diversity, and equity. And then another one that I think is really critical that, um, we are moving forward with is to ensure that we have common language when it comes to some of those things that were just posted around what does anti-racism mean? What does institutional and historical racism mean? How does racism play out in the school district? And we're looking to complete that task, hopefully by the end of the school year, so we can implement that starting September first. So that work is happening across the district. Um, and we do have, uh, a, a partner, a, a group of community, um, partners who we work with individuals who we're going to move this work forward. So, I'm committed to every time we have a, a Board business meeting, regular business meeting, that I'll give some updates to show the work that we're doing, our commitment, and to make sure that the Board understands where we are as well. Thank you, Commissioner Adams.
Okay, um, I'm going to ask if there's any last minute, um, input that the other Board members, um, want to bring to the table. Uh, I, I'm really feeling some kind of way that I have to fast-track this topic. I, I'm really feeling some kind of way about that, but I know I need to, I fast-track it. It's nine thirty. You know what I'm saying? And, and. Yeah, so, um, if anybody else has anything, um, here's another, the next CIGR Committee meeting is going to be on, I think it's February seventh or February ninth. Um, I, I'm going to try, hope, hope that a whole lot of other stuff ain't getting scheduled, when my stuff is getting scheduled. Um, because we do not need to be fast-tracking, um, this topic of all topics. It, it does not need to be fast-checked. Um, with that, let me see, is there any hands up? Nope, okay, so, we're going to move on to the, um, talk about the legislative agenda. Um, we got some Medicaid items for the legislative agenda. Um, we're going to develop a mechanism for school districts to receive Medicaid reimbursement for non-IEP service provided to students. We're going to reallocate the distribution of certified public, CPE, Certified Public Expenditures Revenue. Um, we're going to. We're going to provide a process to assist schools in matching students for potential Medicaid reimbursement. And now I'm going to go point by point on here because we've definitely, I'm doing a fast track in here. But if anybody has, if any commissioner has a specific question, it can't get answered because we do got Mike Sosa here with us tonight.
Can I make a statement?
Yes, yes you may, Dr. Joe.
I just want to say, you know, we can go into detail if you want. Or I guess you can ask Mr. Sosa later or during this meeting if you like. But this is an attempt, oftentimes we talked about cutting and reducing and cutting expenses. But in this particular instance, these are opportunities to increase revenue. These are revenue generator, generated type of items. If we can get these three items in front of legislators for consideration in terms of lobbying on our behalf, these are opportunities for us to receive access to more Medicaid reimbursements if these three things are done and done correctly. We are asking for a fair share of revenue as relates to reimbursements. We're asking for opportunities to receive more monies for non-IEP services for which our students take full advantage of. And I think the first one is, I think Mike can explain this better. A service that we used to have to help us identify children who are eligible for Medicaid. So I know it's late in the evening and I don't want to tank anything from Mike, but I just want to make sure that you understand that we're asking for something that would help the district generate more monies back into the district.
I think that was a good point that you just made there because that's what all, that's what Marching on Albany is all about. Getting revenue, getting some revenue, so. I see nobody else has their hand up?
Yeah, I raise my hand, I'm sorry.
Commissioner LeBron?
Yeah, I just want to also reiterate why we should be advocating for this because Medicaid is also an area that the governor is trying to cut, which is a necessary, it's just necessary for our community and our families who definitely utilize it, including my grandson and my daughter because they had to work because of COVID, what my daughter is, I want to put that out there. But we do need to be uplifting that there are no cuts to Medicaid. We have thousands of families that also utilize Medicaid and CHIP for their own, you know, medical services. But that is a big concern for me when the governor starts to talk about making cuts in Medicaid, making cuts in school that we're going to be impacted in a double negative way by not having the opportunity to access these resources through Medicaid for our students. So I think we have to also highlight that for our legislators, our state legislators, who may not always make that connection, that it's not just school cuts, but it's also not cutting Medicaid that impacts our families and that we also utilize to make sure that our students are getting a lot of the services that they need and making that connection for them. Thank you.
So, and we're talking about this legislative breakfast planning. We already sent out the save the date, which is like January 15th, 2021.
Excuse me, Commissioner Adams?
That's what you sent out, we sent out the save the date on that date.
Commissioner Adams?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, just if we could go back for a moment. The reason that we're looking at these Medicaid items is because we need to have them added to the legislative agenda. You all already voted and agreed on a legislative agenda. These items came to your attention afterwards. And so you'd like to have them added to the existing legislative agenda.
So we needed to vote on it?
I don't know if you need to vote. Well, the legislative agenda was adopted by resolution. Kalia can maybe clarify if this portion needs to be voted on.
You, you need a, you do need a motion to amend the, to amend the
Motion to amend the agenda. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Does Kalia need us to?
We're voting.
Yes.
What was that? I couldn't hear that, Commissioner Paul.
Do you need to see us for that vote? Do you need to take down the screen share?
Yes, I do. I, well, I only, I can see most of the commissioners, but I do need to see the remainder. Yeah, so we have a motion and a second and just need a vote on that.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So let me tell you really quickly what the breakfast consists of. We'll have participants from SLC Student Conference. President of that is Nia Simmons, she's going to speak. We're going to have SLC members to support the breakout rooms. We've asked for administration participation. The superintendent is going to speak. Our department chief to be present, probably possibly in breakout rooms. Content expert administrators to facilitate breakout room discussions. We are in the process of identifying the school community president as well. Our parent rep Jessica will address the participants. We have invited one of our legislative partners to provide the keynote. We've extended a presenter invitation to a community partner. If you would like to view the attendee list or suggest attendees, please email Francine. We're going to have, in addition, we're going to have proposing that we try to do a possible spring parent event. Parent development, I don't know if it would be open forum or some other format. We'll revisit this next time when we're not fast tracking at the next CIGR committee meeting. And with that, I'm going to pass to Gavel to the Vice President Elliott.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams. And I do apologize for that because you're absolutely right. You know, we should not be fast tracking, you know, the issue around racial equity. So I do apologize for that, you know, but I really would like to be able to, when I'm really alert, to be able to lend to the conversation. And so I'm sort of winding down here. But the next item is the HR committee discussion, the HR committee. And I'm going to ask if I can get approval for the September 22nd?
So moved.
Second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome, Christopher. Christopher is going to present on the vision and the reorganization of the Human Capital Initiative Department. And also you'll be doing a presentation on district staffing. So welcome, Christopher.
Can I, can I just jump in really quickly before that, Commissioner Elliott? We tabled that because of the length of the meeting. So we're going to do the staffing update next week as well as the PD for, for this evening, just in the interest of time.
Okay, so it's the vision, the presentation on the vision and the reorganization? All right, thank you. Thank you, Jesus.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for having me this, this evening. I'm here to talk about the Office of Human Capital Reorganization. And next slide. So this evening, just to put some context on this, I started in the district. Previously worked in the Syracuse City School District on October 1st. And as part of my entry plan, I engaged in a purposeful and planned entry plan to plan, do, and study. And that's an iterative four-step process to ensure that I could really understand the, the needs and the feedback in the school district around human resources. And one of the things that I did in that process was I ensured that I had entry meetings with everyone within the Office of Human Capital as well as the executive cabinet with our union leadership, meeting with them, talking with them, learning from them, studied documents such as the independent monitors, academic and financial plans, the Real Teams recommendations and their action plan. The superintendent's district strategic plan was also an important part of that process. In addition to other conversations, bringing with me my experiences in other school districts as well. I'm a certified professional human capital leader. And so bringing best practices and research from the field of human capital to my thinking and my work here in the district. Next slide. So the next couple of slides, I'm not going to read those for you. You have those and I know we're, we're late into the night. But on these next couple of slides, what you'll see is some explanation about the differences between what human resources is versus what human capital is. And I encourage you to take a look at those, or people in the public that, that are here, that are watching this evening, that we need to highlight where we are and where we need to go. And when you look at the list in the green, those aren't negative things. But the list in the blue is much more strategic and innovative and a place where we should be and where we need to be relative to how we care for, value, respect, and work with our staff in the service of students, our families, and our community. Really important to that is an emphasis on people in that we believe in our people, that we support our people, that we develop our people. Next slide. And so here on this slide, you see again some differences between what is human resources versus what is human capital. Human capital is much more strategic and thoughtful and intentional about trying to change mindsets, change practices, change processes. And it speaks to the importance of doing work not only from a specific office or from a specific group of people in a school district, but efforts and work that the entire school district should be engaged in. So human capital work is not the function of a single office. It's ensuring that the entire district is thoughtful to and working to support and grow everyone in the school district, certainly our students, but our staff so that we can do the best for our students and our families. And so what the Office of Human Capital does is the strategic work to help ensure that the rest of the district, in particular our district leadership at the, the district level and in the school buildings, to ensure that they're working to develop the people in the organization. And the Office of Human Capital should be providing technical support and leadership to help building leaders and other department leaders across the organization do that work well. Next slide. What I don't want you to come away from in my conversation here is that human resource work is somehow unimportant. It's actually really important. It's really important that the work in the green box, those transactional items, that those are done well, that they're done effectively, that they're done efficiently, and that they're done in a way that reflects best practices. So we need to have those transactional pieces really tight. But we also need to be shifting and thoughtful and strategic to how we are doing the work that is in the blue box. And so that's where I want to ensure our Office of Human Capital, the work that I do and the work that our leaders across the district do falls into that blue box. Next slide. So again, I just want to emphasize that it's really two parts of the whole, the transactional and the strategic work, all very important. And the combination of those two things helps to ensure that we as a district are attentive to recruiting, developing, and supporting the most effective diverse staff that we can and that we're providing excellent customer service and technical support to the leaders in the organization to ensure that our staff are the best that they can be in the service of students. So next slide. The Office of Human Capital is literally, plays a role from recruitment through retirement. And on this slide, you see a wheel of all of the things that go into play in terms of an employee's life cycle, again, from recruitment through retirement. Literally, the Office of Human Capital has the ability to touch and impact the entire life cycle of a staff person. And in that work, we need to ensure that we have the most effective teachers, school leaders, and support staff. Next slide. So coming to the school district, one of the things that was really important for me to look at was the organization of our Office of Human Resources. And when I looked at this organizational chart, what I noticed was a lack of clarity specifically around the organization of the people and the reporting structure that you see on this slide. I also noticed that there was repetitive work functions and division of similar work. That is, we had people doing the same thing for civil service employees versus certified staff. And they weren't necessarily fully connecting with each other to ensure consistent practices or efficiencies. What I also noticed and experienced was that the team, very willing to do strategic work, some great people on the team, however, much of their work is, has, or was focused on transactional efforts. And it was not set up for a real focus on that strategic focused work. Next slide. So we know this, but in terms of context, Rochester in context is really important. We know that we have great things to do. We have great expectations for our students and our families and our staff. We also know that we are an incredibly diverse school district. But our workforce does not necessarily match up with the student population. Next slide. More specifically, we know that there is a need for greater diversity, not only in our classrooms, but across the organization and our schools and in our departments. More than 40% of public schools in the United States lack a single teacher of color on staff. And unfortunately, only 2% of the entire teaching population is a male of color. Research clearly shows that students of color benefit from seeing teachers that look like them and all students benefit from being taught by diverse teachers. Next slide. So our work is guided by this idea, and this is a great quote, and I'm actually going to take the time to read it. "It's really important that students have people who reflect back to them their language, their culture, their ethnicity, their religion." "It doesn't mean all people, all the people in their lives have to do that mirroring, but they should have some." And we know that in the teaching profession, there really are not enough mirrors. That is so important. Next slide. When we look again at our district, students of color represent 90% of the student population and our teaching staff represents only 25% teachers of color. We have great work to do and increasing that percentage isn't going to happen by accident. We have to be really intentional, we have to be really strategic, we have to be really thoughtful. And based on the conversations we've had earlier tonight, we all know how important and critical this is and how creative and intentional we need to be to change this. Next slide. So we, we were recently called the Office of Human Resources, although I'm not sure everyone in the organization knows us as the Office of Human Resources. Many people have referred to it as HCI or maybe even Human Capital Initiatives. But who we are and what we do moving forward is that we will be the Office of Human Capital and our aim will be to recruit, develop, support, and retain the most effective diverse staff. So there will no be, no longer be HCI, it will no longer be human resources. It will be simply the Office of Human Capital. And the work that we will be doing is human capital focused. Next slide. So what I'm proposing is that we have four specific teams, each with a strategic human capital focus. And you can note on this slide, you'll see the, the name of each team, the aim of each team in the white box, and then some of the critical, important innovations that need to take place to ensure that these teams each have that these teams each have and are working to develop a strategic focus. So there'll be a recruitment, selection and retention team, an employee benefits team, a staff and educator effectiveness team, and a staff relations team. And so what I want to do is take a moment to talk about some of the, the key, key work that will be of the focus of these teams. Next slide. So having some focus, at least initially, the emphasis of the human capital team's work will be ensuring recruitment and retention. Because everything we do as a district attracts or discourages prospective teachers and staff. And conversely, everything we do is either attracting or discouraging current teachers and staff. And it's really that simple. And we each, everyone in this organization, from the Board of Education, from the mayor, from the city, to the rest of our employees, staff and students, we all can impact how we recruit and retain our staff. And so we all have a role to play in how we change perspectives and change experiences for people. Next slide. So more specifically, and I'm not going to go through this whole slide tonight, but what you begin to see on this slide is that there are specific mindsets, levers and processes that we can be attentive, strategic and intentional to, to change the reality for how we recruit and how we retain our staff. And as I mentioned, these mindsets, levers and processes are, are work that not only the Office of Human Capital should be attentive to, but across the organization. And so how the Office of Human Capital works with leadership at the district level and the building level to think about and impact these mindsets, levers and processes is the work that we will do. And it's work that each of us has a role to play in. Next slide. With respect to educator and staff effectiveness, this is a second big area for my focused work. Ensuring that we are strategic and innovative in this area. This is work that we are currently not focused on. And we must do this work to attract, prepare, support and retain our staff. Every child and every school deserves an excellent classroom teacher and, and a solid building leader who supports their professional growth. We have to work with our leaders to ensure that they are attentive to how they develop and support staff, how they are providing feedback to their staff and how they're having consistent expectations for what best practices are across the organization. Embedded in that is the importance of providing feedback. And feedback can be provided informally and formally. Next slide. APR is something that I, I think most people are well aware of, the annual professional performance review process. Our educators and our staff, they can change outcomes for students. And when we have targeted differentiated professional development, we can develop people. When we believe in people, we, we can work with them, we can help them to grow. APR is intended to assist with that through ongoing individualized feedback to, to staff. However, it cannot be simply a compliance activity. So we have work to do to ensure that our systems, our practices, how we approach them is done well and with fidelity and that it is more than just a compliance activity, that we're really taking the time to invest in our staff and grow them. Next slide. So another piece of, of critical importance. And I say this, and I, I like to remind people in central office, not just on my own team, but across, across teams, that we exist in central office to support our schools. Principals are the single most important talent that we have. The teaching staff added together is certainly quite impactful. But when we talk about a single person and when we think about people, our school principals are the single most important individual that we have beyond students. Of course, students are the most important individuals that we have in our schools. But when we line ourselves up to support our principals, it will help to ensure that we are in turn supporting schools and supporting our students and our families. Because the role that principals play is critical. So we must support them well. And we need to be set up to support them well through customer service models. So the Office of Human Capital will be set up such that a staff relations director is linked up and working directly with the school chief. We have three school chiefs in the organization. We will have, and we do have three staff relations directors that will be realigned to be married with a, a school chief. And with them will be a recruitment analyst. When you think about a principal and their challenging work, there are a couple of things that they need from the Office of Human Capital. They need someone that's going to help support them when they have vacancies and, and through the recruitment process. And they also need someone that's going to help them with staffing needs. And staffing needs could be a variety of things. It could be how we evaluate and support the growth of our staff. But it also could be when staff need to be reminded of expectations or held accountable. And so having this team that is working to support principals will be critical. Our school chiefs also have difficult jobs. And if they have a portfolio of, of schools that they're working to support. And so we want to do what we can to support our school chiefs well. Next slide. So this is the proposed new organization for human capital. And if you look back or think back to the previous slide that had the organizational chart on it, this one certainly has color on it. But it, it's clearly aligned to those four teams that I spoke about earlier. Having four specific teams that are aligned for strategic human capital work, it actually restores labor relations and career in teaching to be within the Office of Human Capital. At the moment, Labor Relations and Career and Teaching, which is the program we, we work with the RTA to support our first year teachers, those are outside the Office of Human Capital. So by bringing them into the Office of Human Capital, we can ensure more connections and strategic effort on that, on, on that level. I'm proposing that we create a Director of Staff and Educator Effectiveness. And we've identified grant funding to do so. Again, this is really important work that, that we are not well focused on as an organization. And other school districts of our size or larger have folks that are, that are focused on educator effectiveness. We will ensure that we strengthen transactional organization and the service that we provide, not only to our schools, our school chiefs and our principals and to our staff. And we will reduce two FTE positions on the general fund to ensure that we can do this. Because we are in challenging times and, and we want to ensure that we are being lean and smart and efficient. And again, there'll be the addition of the grant funded position, but a reduction of two general fund positions. And so the green boxes represent positions that are transferring into human capital and the orange being the new position that would be grant funded. Next slide. So this has been a process. As I mentioned, I joined October 1st at around 100 days at this point. And so reviewing, we reviewed this plan and developed this plan within the Office of Human Capital, working with the superintendent, the independent monitor and our executive cabinet for feedback. We've had to connect with the Monroe County Civil Service. We are working to develop our reorganization by branding and communicating and, and developing new systems and processes within our team. And tonight, we're reviewing this plan with you with a rollout and implementation to follow over the next couple of weeks. Next slide. And that's it.
Thank you, Christopher. Are there any questions for Christopher? Commissioner LeBron?
No, I'd be ready. I'd be writing them down too. I just have three questions. So one, I appreciate the reduction of the two FTEs and highlighting that because I did see that there was a new position created. So before I even go down that rabbit hole, I do want to uplift that I do appreciate your model, Chris. There is a model similar to that with Rochester Regional Health when they had the merger with Unity. You was not here for that. But there was a major merger between two health systems. And what they did in their human resources is created individuals that saw, had oversight of clusters of departments and sites and organizations to kind of help manage that. And what I liked about that model is that I wouldn't have to go through anyone in HR to get an answer specifically to my site or my clinic or practice. I can go to my HR that was assigned to us. And then that person would also come out to our team meetings and just reintroduce themselves periodically and things that we can go through that individual for. And so I share that. So I hope that that's something that we can get those HR representatives to also do with the teams is to go out and speak to them and, and talk about the services that HRs offers and what questions they can answer. And I just think it is an effective type of model that just works when we're talking about a large organization. But my question is, if you said the position was going to be grant funded, and I was just wondering what, what grants specifically? And then if you've thought about some foresight, if a grant runs out, how would we retain that position? Primarily, just because in the past, we as a district have retained or created positions under grants. The funding ran out and then we moved those positions into our general fund. And in the non-for-profit world, we call that soft money into a hard item budget line. And we just simply can't afford that and continue that practice here. So any thoughts around that tonight? And if you don't have any thoughts around that, Chris, I can let you ponder on it and bring it back up. But just want to put it out there.
No, you, thank you for raising that question. You know, it's really important that, that when we look at when grants ends, that we're thoughtful to how we're going to fund or, or will we be able to fund those positions? And, and that's a process we're going through right now in the district, actually, across the board. But what I would say is this is through Title II. And I, I know an easy way where we've talked about it before was these tend to be more of the perpetual type of grants that, that are committed to the district year after year. And so it would be through that.
Okay. And then one last question, and it's related to the position that was titled, the new one, the Director of Educator Effectiveness. Just curious how that would tie into the chief academic, the academic chief that we just, that position is a new position to the district too. And if they will be working together or if there's any plans for them to work together? Because one would be, would be embedded through human resources and the other one is embedded in the cabinet. So just some thoughts around that.
Yeah, thank you. So the Director of Staff and Educator Effectiveness would, would really be focused on a portfolio of work that would ensure that we are evaluating all staff, right? And, and we oftentimes focus on teachers and principals. And, and, and school districts don't necessarily go beyond that. And so what we need to do is ensure we're doing really solid work with our teachers and principals. But we have a whole lot of other staff we need to be attentive to. So how we evaluate, how we work with and support leaders in their work to evaluate, how we work with our unions to develop those systems. That's a piece of it. But also how we develop our career ladder work, how we help, for example, paraprofessionals to maybe work to become teachers. And so there's a partnership with educator effectiveness that works with recruitment. But then also, as you're pointing out, the Office of Human Capital, and, and you know, it's my understanding, I'm one of the first educators to be in this seat perhaps in, in decades, right? So I have an educational focus. I, I consider myself first and foremost an educator. And the Office of Human Capital, particularly my role in the Staff and Educative Effectiveness Director, should be working very closely with the Chief Academic Officer to ensure that we can support each other and that our, our efforts are well aligned and, and, and smartly done. So I, I see that as being a, a critical partnership.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. I don't see any other hands raised. Thank you so very much. And then the, the, the next item of agenda, do I need to close these meetings? Do we need to close these committee meetings and then go to the next item? Is that how we do it, Callia?
Yes, yes. Based on what I'm seeing to, I believe the meeting, that's it for our meeting agenda. On the other two items until next week.
Okay, all right. Now, Commissioner Power, you were talking about your question that you wanted to have asked under new business. What is it?
Worked with Callia to convey my concerns directly to the Superintendent and to Carleen, the CFO. And hopefully we'll be able to bring it as part of the finance committee agenda along with the resolutions that were, that were. What's the word, Steve?
Move to that committee meeting.
We committed it to the.
Referred, referred to committee, lost the word for a minute there. So we're good. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. And we have no executive session items, correct?
Correct.
All right. So before I ask for a motion to adjourn, we, we've got to be more mindful that we got to stay on time. Because at, at some point, I just sort of, sort of zoom out after a long day. So let's be mindful that we, we need to keep our conversation, good conversations. Don't misunderstand me. But towards the end of the meeting, I'm done. So I, Commissioner Adams.
So I, I just want to say that even in my frustration, I know the real deal. All of this came from all the speakers. You know, we got some serious stuff going, going on. And so the same thing is probably going to happen again next week. It, it's just the nature of this business. So we, we just have to hold on. Okay.
All right. All right. Motion to adjourn. Well, we've got the, the survey. And you all, you all know what to do when it comes to was the chair fair. Y'all know what to do.
Now, you're not supposed to, you're not supposed to influence the vote like that.
I did that the last time, man.
You're not right.
Chair was good. That's number 10, y'all.
Been telling us the number on the survey. Wow.
No shame.
And it was that a dog or a cat that was walking across the top of your chair?
That was the Chihuahua.
Oh, is it Chihuahua? Is it like? Does it have different lengths of hair?
No.
Does it have a tuft of a tail or something?
Yes.
Ah, okay. Because I mean, I. Wow, it didn't have like a fluffy tail.
Y'all set, Callia?
I am all set now. What was that? I'm sorry.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.